Alright, it is six thirty. I will call a meeting to order. Hello Christina.
Hey, Harry.
Wasn't sure if you were going to join us, so. Uh, the first order of business then will be to, uh, is there a motion to approve trustee Rogers for role participation?
So moved.
So moved by.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Maya. Uh, any further comments? All those in favor say hi.
Hi.
Those opposed say nay. Uh, welcome to role participation. Will the secretary please take the role?
Trustee Bloom.
Here.
Trustee John Corte.
Here.
Trustee Fairfax here. Trustee Foss is absent. Trustee Gannabulu.
Here.
Trustee Rogers.
Here.
Trustee Freeze.
Here. Thank you.
Uh, next item will be approval of the minutes from our August twenty-seventh meeting. Are there any questions? Or corrections regarding our bills minutes? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The minutes are approved. Uh, thank you. Go on to public comments. I received no, uh, comments via email or nor via the public comment form. If you have one, uh, guest, Ron Milner of, uh, Sycamore. If you would like to make, you can take a seat at the, there by the microphone and make your public comment. How many minutes?
Three minutes, please.
First of all, hello everyone. My name is Ron Milner and I am resident of Sycamore in Illinois, DeKalb County. And I travel back and forth throughout the state and I talk about the subject that's passionate to my heart. Quick question for anyone having, you don't have to raise your hand, just think about this. How many people have a refrigerator in their home? How many people have a stove? How many people have a bed? How many people have a financial portfolio that outperforms seventy percent of professional money managers? Most of us don't. Today is September the twenty-third, I think, or twenty-second?
Twenty-four.
Does anyone know what the year-to-date return is on the stock market? The year-to-date return on the stock market is twenty percent, which is phenomenal. That's double what the average is year-to-year basis. Now, back in two thousand eleven, I created a financial literacy company called Boohoo, which is what's on my head here. And what we do is we go to schools, libraries, small businesses, and we talk about the importance of financial literacy in education. Uh, I travel to libraries and I do my financial workshops. And about seven years ago, I went to this beautiful library. Uh, it's just phenomenal. I met the staff, I met the patrons there, and I did one of my workshops and we had a great time. Their library is not even comparable to this one because their library is its library. And so I brought this on the board and I'll just read it here so you guys can look at it and you can read about me and my, my, my company and what we do. Financial literacy is so important, I can't even tell you. It's the backbone of everything that we do. Because all of these students out here, everyone, everyone has a dream. I had a dream when I was their age too, but then my dream got deterred. And once I realized that, I came back to my dream. So what I would like to propose is that my company Boohoo can come to this library and do another workshop. Because the things that we learned, and literally, I taught myself financial literacy. And you know where I taught myself that? At the library. I lived in LGL's Gilroy Library as a librarian, showing all the books and newspapers and magazines I need to learn in the subject. And she came up with a ton of books and I saw those books and I said, "I'm not going to read that, that's too much." But I forced myself to read it. And once I read it, my mind just expanded. Now, everyone knows what this is, right? Take action. What do you use this for? Use this to measure things, right? How many of us know how to measure a stock market? Most of us don't. At our workshop, we teach people how to measure the stock market, how to build a portfolio, and we use the, the reference materials at the library. Uh, libraries are great. I go to so many different libraries you wouldn't believe it. Gilroy Library, DeKalb Library, Carroll Street Library, Carroll Washington Library. And I go to all of these different libraries because I've learned so much. And I want to inspire your, uh, people here, your, um, uh, clients who want to learn how to do these things. It's fun, it's educational, and it's, it's life-changing. Uh, so again, my information was there. Uh, feel free to reach out to me either through my email, which is ron@858@gmail.com. And reach out to me. And, uh, you can see, we also did workshops, uh, at the Fenwick High School here in Oak Park. Uh, we did one at Oak Park River Course High School. And, um, the students are just great. Their minds are open for this. And the best time to teach this subject to people is when they're young. When they're to be my age, I think they won't have time for this. But we can do it and we have a lot of fun. It's engaging, it's life-changing. And, uh, again, I love this library. I'm here at this library maybe twice a month. And again, I live sixty-five miles away because there's so much great material right here in this library. That's done a phenomenal job. So I thank you for your time and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Uh, next item on the agenda will be trustee comments and calendar. Uh, we have the, uh, coming up in a couple weeks, the, uh, ILA conference in Peoria and our October board meeting, which will be on the twenty-second. Any other items or, or number comments?
I don't think it's us, but the library is going to be at the farmer's market on the nineteenth. Did I say that?
Link to the bookbag? Or did you guys just?
I think it's the bookbag.
I think it's the bookbag, yeah. I will put that on here, babe.
I was gonna say.
Okay. That's, unless the trustees are knowing, then it's on the trustee calendar.
No, no, no.
Yes.
Okay.
So you guys, I'm not sure where that stood.
They didn't have a, I reached out to them, they didn't have another slot for them.
To cancel our slot this year, so.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to note that our, and this is a month ahead, November board meeting is the week of Thanksgiving and I didn't know if we wanted to get on.
You noticed item ten E on our agenda.
Oh, 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 I see. I see. You were thinking more ahead than me.
Yeah.
I thought I had seen it on somewhere. I was just looking at the piece of paper in front of me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, since we, since we voted on the, on the count, the schedule at the beginning of the year, it should be an action item for us to vote and not just a, a thing we change on the calendar.
Excellent.
Okay. Alright, we'll move on to, uh, our interim co-director reports.
Um, open to report, it's good to see some of you guys at the barbecue. And just kind of, probably spend, hoping with, or review on the barbecue, sir.
Okay. And our staff reports.
Um, so for the strategic priorities report, uh, in your packet, me and I have a few things to highlight. Um, under engagement, so this month that, and I'm sure you reported when you walked in, middle high school is busy. School is back and, um, they've been more busy this summer. It's interesting how some of the different departments, you know, this department is quieter in the summer and, you know, children's is louder, it's busier, so now it's flipped. Um, and so they were busy preparing for the start of the new school year by connecting with community partners and marketing our fall programs. Um, they participated in a variety of events outside of the building, including, uh, OPR College Night for seniors, back-to-school nights at OPR High School and Julian Middle School. And there was a back-to-school social and supply giveaway hosted by the township and like at the CRC. Um, and one of our members of that middle and high school team organized a full year greeting for the students, which was great. And so we had members of our community engagement, our youth services team, our middle and high school services team. It was very, very busy. Um, and I'm glad that we were able to participate in all of those events. Um, calling out for staff recognition is supervising librarian, who was recently promoted to that title, Alex Gutierrez. Um, he has really built a remarkable relationship with the ESL teachers from Julian Brooks Middle School and has provided valuable support to ESL and immigrant students over the past year. Um, he's been warmly welcoming students into our spaces, helping them sign up for library cards and helping them use our resources. Um, his bilingual skills have been critical, making these students feel welcome and supported. And so, just a few more other things about what he did, but we just wanted to take a minute to highlight him. And then our writing section, as I was talking about, we wrapped up both summer reading programs for adults and childrens. Um, there are reports linked in this report, um, for the kind of more significant write-ups about both of those programs. Um, and this was after three months of excitement, um, and just the kids' summer reading programs were really busy. Both programs use an online platform called BeanStack. Um, and then last thing I learned, um, Ginger Slade and I collaborated to organize, uh, a staff workshop called Trauma-Informed Care by a nationally recognized speaker, Beth Waller. This two-part session, um, implemented, uh, focused on implementing trauma-informed care in the library setting and acquiring skills for addressing and minimizing interpersonal challenges from a trauma-informed perspective. Um, we were really fortunate that she was able to come in and speak. She recently, uh, she's a national speaker, she recently moved to the Chicago suburbs. So it was kind of nice for us to have that. And she has published a book. And so I knew that staff, like forty of us went, uh, the second session was kind of role-playing some of these activities and I know that, um, it was really helpful for the staff to get that experience.
Okay. Um, under stewardship, updating and maintaining library facilities, uh, we collaborated with McCann and New and Door to replace over seventy-five windows, uh, throughout the adult center. Additionally, we upgraded our parking garage equipment, uh, by installing a dedicated server and new internal processing systems for the entry gate, um, exit gate, and pay station. Uh, and furthermore, we improved the building's air handlers and exhaust fan efficiency, which are essential for both equipment performance and overall building comfort. Um, under anti-buses and equity, diversifying special collections. This summer, special collections digitized six hundred and fifty-two audio cassettes from the Stan West Radio Interview Collection, um, which he generously donated to the library. The interviews feature prominent figures such as, uh, Mamie To Mobley, Jesse Jackson, and Deborah Johnson, who is the widow of Freddie Hampton. Uh, we are incredibly fortunate, uh, that Mr. West chose this library to donate such an important collection. And this contribution really aids our efforts to diversify special collections and to highlight historically significant and underrepresented, uh, figures in our archives. So really excited about that.
And then the other thing I included in the board packet this month was something from Wales. Um, Wales is working on, um, library talking points. This was a project that they, uh, worked with its members to create talking points and to assist in crafting conversations with everyone, from friends and family to members of your community and decision-makers. Uh, there were ones for different types of library. I included the public library one in here. It's a one-pager and it's free. You know, if you guys as library trustees to be our advocate when you're out, you know, kind of talking about libraries, um, Wales actually did have something handy for people to kind of go out and, you know, talk about something. Our communications team, we've discussed, um, maybe customizing one just for our library too. You know, what do we do? So kind of a one-pager, you can kind of hit those main points about talking about what this library does. Because as you can see in the strategic priorities report, it's very dense. It's full of a lot of really important information, but sometimes it's, you know, it's a lot.
Yeah.
So how do we condense that down to something that you guys can easily talk about and advocate for the library? Just wanted to share that.
You said this was the one for public libraries?
Mm-hmm.
Did they, I'm assuming the other options were the school libraries?
Academics, tool, and special.
Okay.
And they're on the Wales website. And I can think of this thing as well. It's called MyLibraryIsDoubleOne.
Yeah, the special ones tend, tends to include auto-law libraries.
Yeah.
Any questions about the strategic priorities?
The digital colla, the, the digitization of those audio tapes, are those available on, online through our site or do they have to, like, access them locally?
Um, so right now, we're looking for a platform, um, to put those. They actually have not come back, um, to us yet. There were some condition issues and so they're repairing that as well as digitizing them. So once we find a platform, um, we will upload those and those will be available through the website for researchers.
I did, I think, um, this will probably be in next month, but I'm super eager. Do we have things planned for Band Book Week?
For?
Band Book Week?
Honey, you would have to check for that.
There's no other questions on the strategic priorities report? We can move into, uh, the staff reports.
Actually, I'm sorry. I was just looking through the, um, Summer Twenty-Four Strategic Marketing Campaign and I was, uh, uh, I, I just, it's, looks really interesting and I was wondering if there is a, a, a full report somewhere that's been written? I don't want to cause work, but if there's one, I would love to see it.
I think.
Like, what we have is the presentation, right? Presentation slides? Again, I'm not trying, but if there's one, can I?
I will check.
Okay.
I will, you know.
Okay, thank you.
And about the, um, the update on the store and going out to locations to sell things, I like the idea of the, um, the shirts and hats and everything being sold somewhere else other than the library. I think that's a great idea.
Then we can go into the, the staffing report. See the, the summer, summer temporary interns and other staff are cycling out. Any questions? Then we can go into our financial reports. And our report from Billy about the, the status of, um, where we are for the year. Any questions?
I will say follow any more questions. The budget, I'm secure.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move into the resolution on disbursements, uh, seven B. Which leaves on, on page nineteen, begins and goes through. So, oh, I'm sorry, page thirty. It's the resolution, it goes through page fifty-four. Are there any questions regarding, uh, the journal on disbursements? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Maya, is there a second? Second by Maya. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. It is approved. Additional reports, IGOV.
Um, so, and IGOV, we had, hold on a second, let me just pull up that note. We had a guest speaker come, um, which was really nice. It was Cheryl Potts, who's the ED of the Community Mental Health Board. That was started a while back to, to have her come because we were talking about doing some sort of IGOV, um, event for the public around what mental health sort of supports are offered by all the different governing bodies. Um, and so, uh, township said, well, we should start with the mental health board and find out what's, you know, because that's kind of the center of it all. Um, and it was really great to hear. We have, you know, with a very small budget, they do a lot and they do a lot of it by collaborating with the different governing bodies. And I'm sure they do here as well. So, um, that was the, the main part about that. It was interesting though that they're heavy in the zero to seventeen age and not as much in eighteen to twenty-five. And when we talked about that, they're, you know, and asked why, she said she would look into, you know, more data-based answers, but anecdotally, she was thinking.
When you say they're heavy, you mean they have a lot of participation or they have a lot of programming planned?
Both.
Ah, okay.
Um, they heavily target youth. And so I was asking, I was noticing that the eighteen to twenty-five was lower and asked about that. And she said, "Well, maybe because, you know, kids go off to college." And so I raised the notion and, and talked about anecdotally, knowing if, um, young people that are struggling with mental health may come home to live with family and maybe going to Triton or working or something like that. And so she was, she was really grateful for, um, input and was going to go back and, and talk about that. And, um, if NAMI thrive and Sarah's in to do education in schools. So, yeah, it was, um, I think it was really valuable and I was wondering if it was the sort of thing that we might want at some point to hear from them, you know, to understand more about what's done. Um, and if that would be something helpful for board members or staff. Um, we were talking about doing, uh, an event on, um, October seventh about, um, the elections and helping people to figure out, but it looks like it's not coming together. So that will happen another time. So that's IGOV. Which I also went through kind of how many, what seats are up in the different, um, different governing bodies. So D two-hundred has four seats, and that's not speaking for who may or not be running, but just how many seats are expiring. Uh, D ninety-seven, three, park district, two, township, all of them are up at the same time.
Yep.
And then R four. So there's a lot going into the, the next election. Oh, and, um, Tim Thomas, if you haven't seen, was, um, appointed as supervisor. So his seat will be open. And Ade is running for, um, a different office. So it'll be.
Okay.
The township?
Yeah, it's everywhere, it's weird. It's a peculiar thing to just do all of it.
Yeah, we just kind of tap the table and that then.
Yeah. Apparently.
Institutional.
Yeah, that, thank you. That was the words I was searching for. Alright. Thank you. Uh, COG, I was not able to make the meeting.
Um, I was there and, um, oh, I forgot where I get my office, but it was, essentially the park district has a really good guide about kind of their procedures. At the same, we were talking about the bylaws, but one of the things that came up was like who kind of develops them and training and onboarding and, um, kind of one of the things on the agenda today was, um, full training. And a lot of them have, Kevin from the village was explaining that he brought in, um, a trainer to work with the village board. And so it seems pretty common with all the other boards that they have some training or they're going to like the park district conference or the school board conferences, um, get some additional training. But, yeah, we talked a lot about the election too. Um, one of the things that was brought up was, um, once people see who's, you know, going to run, we can invite them into the library to meet with us, like them a leadership team to say, okay, here's what the, here's what would be expected of you, here's how, it's just kind of like, well, if you have a library run and some of the operations, so they have a better understanding of, um, the board.
Planet Green, Ted is not here, so I'm, so, uh, lots of others, I don't think. Matt from staff is not here, so, uh, we can follow up with that next month. Uh, Friends?
Not last month, so I do not need this one.
Why?
Unless I miss something.
Alright. Next item is.
I'm sorry, Suzie, you said there was, there was a second point for the COG meeting.
There was a training, um, they have a packet of like their kind of guidelines that the park district does.
Okay, thank you.
I can give you guys a copy.
Alright, then, uh, review of the board bylaws.
Um, so I know that I'd asked for this and, and Matt, you'd said last month that you would put up.
Uh, shared document, yeah.
A shared document, so I don't know how many of us have had an opportunity to look over the board doc, the bylaws again?
I, I didn't have a chance to look. I mean, I, I read them, I did not really look at them in a way of considering potential changes.
Right. So, I mean, and, and this could be, and probably should be an ongoing conversation. Uh, I think one thing that I would like to do is maybe have, if not at today's meeting, because it's not an action item in any case, but maybe think about by when we would like to make some kind of a decision about when we actually want to see changes come in and, and maybe have that be recommended in any case.
When do folks have to be on the ballot?
Uh, the filing starts the day after Veterans Day.
So the twelfth of November.
The week after the general election.
I mean, my thought would be, I would hope to have it ready for those who would be considering these seats. So that they know, yeah, what they're getting into. I mean, the expectations.
I know about you making that point last month, and that was a deeply compelling point. I know it's a tight timeline because it's.
You have a much longer date.
Yes.
I know, I said I was gonna do some work on that and I'm sorry about that, I, I dropped that ball. Um, I, I, I will try to do that this week so that I don't forget. Um, but if, if I don't do it, just nudge me, please.
So I have, I'm so, I'm sorry, but I just, I wanted to say that I, I don't know, uh, I, I couldn't assume or I didn't want to assume, but I did want to talk about one thing about the committees. And again, this is a question, I don't have a, I'm not like, I'm not definite on this, but in working with Lee and Ted and Suzanne on the search committee, the, um, ED search committee, uh, I wanted to maybe have a conversation about pros and cons of if there's a, if there's a committee like that, that, you know, we would love to be a mixture of trustees and staff members. If it's worth it to limit the number of trustees to two so that there can be meetings that are not in violation of the OMA. And again, I would just like to start the conversation about what that might look like and what the pros and cons of that might be. Um, because I, I don't want a small number of trustees making large decisions. So that, again, that would be the kind of thing where we'd want to make sure that there was something in the bylaws that said that those committees, whatever, they could only make recommendations to the full board and then the full board would vote. Do you know what I mean? Like, that's the kind of thing that we would have to, to, to play out?
I know that sometimes OMA can be cumbersome, but I think it's cumbersome for good reason. I don't think I would be particularly comfortable discussing anything too in-depth outside of.
Sure, and I, I'm not sure, again, where I'm giving off the idea, uh, that I want to circumvent OMA?
No, if it's only two people.
But it, right, so if I can give an example, for instance, like if, if it's just even a scheduling thing, right? Like if you say, "I can make this meeting or not," that's not something that three trustees Like if you say, I can make this meeting or not, that's not something that three trustees can decide, right? If there's, like, we can't go back and forth.
For scheduling, yeah.
Over, over email?
Yeah, first schedule, scheduling a meeting, setting a meeting dates.
Yes, schedules.
Because you're not discussing anything. You're discussing when you can discuss things, okay?
Yeah, my business.
Sure, but that's, is that what we've been doing? Haven't we been making sure that we don't have those details discussed?
Setting, setting a meeting date is, is, you know, is not, does not as well, as well established as not violating Open Meetings Act, because you're not taking action, you're not deciding, you're not making a decision on any particular item. You're setting a meeting date to have that discussion and have and take those action items.
Okay.
Which then gets published. And I, I have to take, uh, it's, I didn't, it's been a year since we did the OMA training. But I think if it's an established committee, even if it's not all made up of board members, if it's a set committee, it still has to follow OMA.
Oh, sure. And that's what we want to make sure we're doing. And so that, that's why I was saying that like if there's, again, we just have the conversation about what these different combinations would look like and what two board members allow us to do, what three board members allow us to do. I, I remember, um, one of the things that I was remembering was that a couple of months ago, Maya brought up the idea that having an odd number of members of, on the board of, on, on any kind of committee is really useful for making decisions, right? So that's, that is one of many hiccups that I can think of. But I would also like us to consider what some of this might look like and not just assume that because we've never talked about it before, that this is necessarily the best way to continue moving forward. So if it's, you know, if it's helpful, we can talk about like specific work or specific examples or, or something like that. But I would just, you know, um, and, and I would also love for there to be clarity around, again, you know, our, the, the committee is a mixture of trustees and staff, which I'm very glad for. So does that mean when we're talking about quorum, does that include this, is the staff person, I'm assuming? And we've been operating with the assumption that Lee is part of our quorum, you know, and but I don't know if that's always true and if.
And also like taking votes to go into closed and all of that, we've been a little unclear.
Okay.
Right, or, or things about like who needs to be here in person and who can be remote, right?
Well, I think that's.
Like all of those rules.
I don't know if that so much lives in our specific bylaws or if it lives more in like.
State statute and the AG's office.
Yeah. I, I think that's more.
Yeah. Well, I.
We need training, um, yeah.
Maybe with the talent.
To, to know the emphasis, but I don't, I don't think it's going to change how we look at our own bylaws.
Well, my, uh, my argument is that I think it changes if we want to have, which we, which was a possibility we'd raised last month. If we want to have certain standing committees, then we would want to, whatever, reproduce those statutes in our bylaws, you know, uh, if, if necessary, but we don't have any like standing committees in the.
We don't and we can, and I, and I think that, well, and also I was, you know, it was like the first thing is all, you know, your point was about a committee making decisions. A, a committee can't make a, a, a decision.
Sure.
It can make a recommendation to the whole board and the whole board would either take it up, amend it or reject it. So like a committee is not going to run away with and implement things on its own. It's always, it always is going, the authority of those decisions will always sit with the entirety of the board. For action items around budget and policy and those questions. But in terms of the, what we specify here, I think it's a matter of what's, we do have latitude in terms of what specific committees we have. I mean, there were times when we had, you know, we, uh, we've never had a policy committee, which I, I think would be, could be worthwhile. We've had, you know, a finance committee, um, from time to time, you know, for many years. I'm trying to think of some of the other ones. We'd have to, I'd have to look back, but it's, we generally will have, um, there, yeah, uh, there'll be a nominate, a nominating committee that is established after the elections.
And that's the only one that's really named in our.
Yeah.
Bylaws, because that's required for us to have officers.
Right, but it's not something that needs to meet regularly, you know, I mean.
Sure.
Technically regularly is over two years, but, um, but in terms of these other pieces, we, we can, we can change what the, whatever that is. And I think we would want to double check against what the, what the statute says for what constitutes a committee in terms of, you know, once, once it's named, you know, and, and how, and how it can be structured. I, you know, a lot of that will be, I believe, is in state law that we, you know, how.
Yeah, well, in that, in that case, that would be something, again, I'm not, I, I'm, for, for some reason, I feel like I'm giving the impression that I want to do something that's in contradiction to the state law.
No, no.
But I'm saying that I would rather err on the side of redundancy where that, the, the, the facts of that are reflected in our bylaws. Because a lot of times this is the document that we come, yes, that we come to, to figure these things out.
This is easier to read. I, and I didn't wanna, and, and I wasn't trying to give that impression that I, that I thought you were trying to do that. I was like, but in terms of, I'm, I was thinking of your talking about who could be a participant in human, and that, and I'm fairly certain that that is in, you know, in a matter of probably ten paragraphs that explained in a state statute.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Only ten.
In only ten, but because they weren't trying.
That time.
Uh, but, uh, and, and so, and that's why I was mentioning the steps, steps to consent.
Yeah, I mean, and.
That probably gives us guidance as to how those pieces can fit together and how we can say, because that, that might limit us in who we can name to a committees. Now.
Then let's, yeah, so then that's.
Let's check that.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect. And then I think that even if we had a note that said pursuant to the statute, do you know what I mean? Like, and I, and I think that some, that kind of clarity would be.
Especially, I think that's there, because I think there are, you know, I think it, it's been raised here and it's gotten the thinking is like, based off, you know, it's like what parts of this are language that is a distilled version of what is in the public library act.
What is ours and what is ours.
What, yeah, what is ours.
What are we distilled in?
Being able to have those translation to, yeah.
Yeah, and I think, and I think that could, you know, like having that citation in here could be very helpful for us. Because it, to your question, it's like, is this a thing that we can set?
Yeah.
That we have more latitude on, or is this a thing that we have a very narrow set of space to move in because state law says this is how much room you have to move.
Right. So I, so my, I, I know Virginia raised the point about the, the timeline with the, with the elections. And I think that that's really important. And I don't know what, uh, how to, I, I would love to hear like everybody's thoughts about how, what we do about that. Because my, my, otherwise my recommendation would be, um, that we don't try and do this by next month. You, for instance, Matt, have one or two things in your day job coming in before November. And, you know, like I, I just, I think that we don't want to rush it, given that, given that it's not one of the policy document or it's not one of the policies that has some kind of a thing on it. At the same time, I feel like that we've been pretty negligent about reviewing the, the bylaws, which is something that we're supposed to be doing. So even if it's to, to start that process, to just have like a, a sense of the scope of work, um, I, I think I would, I would really appreciate, appreciate that.
I will amend my request then. If this cannot be in the hands of folks who will be on the ballot next month, then I would want the board in some way to prioritize that if those folks have questions, we make ourselves available to answer them.
Hmm.
Would perhaps us having our individual uh, you know, suggestions ready at an October board meeting? Because, uh, you know, that way there is at least a framework of, you know, hopefully by the end of the October board meeting, we can have a framework of what we are prioritizing in terms of changes to this document. And of course, this could be something that gets revisited, you know, in June of next year by, where are the seven people who are on this table?
Yeah.
And make a whole new set of changes to it.
Right.
So is, while we have not looked at this in four years and then four years before that and two years before that, uh, it is, I mean, if you look at that calendar, we are, we're on, we're on, we're on schedule. Um.
Once every ten years? You mean, you think we were missing a zero in the bylaws recommendation, really?
Maybe, maybe. Um, but I think that it is in, in terms of giving that framework of, especially if we're looking at what the committees are gonna look like and what that framework is in October, it can give a sense of those looking to run for the office, what the structure that they will be stepping into, which of course can be changed, but it will do that in, in time for the November thing.
Is there a possibility by next month's meeting that we have a copy of this where we have demarcated what is ours to change and what is not ours to change?
I, I personally don't know. I don't know that I have the background by next, uh, by next month, given the ED search, do you know what I mean?
I don't know that I have the expertise. That's.
Well, right, I, I don't know, because I would imagine that somebody would have to comb through, comb through the, the statute.
Can I make a suggestion? It might be good to have a lawyer here in the meeting if you guys wanted to review it and they can talk about what, what, what are, what is statute, what you can change. You, you're gonna have the attorney present.
Yeah.
To, you know, I mean, typically it's Robert's rules and it's.
Mm-hmm. Your own is a norm, you know. Can't change that, um. No, but, right, we can't change, you know, and.
But if we.
What we can't change, I think a lawyer, somebody, you know, on, it's a lawyer, it, you know.
Lawyer could be present at the meeting to do that. If that's something you guys wanted to do, if you had the time to carve out for it.
I think I would mostly just like to know what is within our purview to change, because this is a large document and I don't want us to spend time looking at paragraphs that we have no ability to change. So is it possible that we send it to Ansel Glink and they say like, you can't look at this, you can't look at this, you can look at this sentence? And then we at least know what we're playing with, rather than we just.
I can, I can send that email right now.
Thank you. That, then we at least have a narrowed down scope of what we can even be looking at and that might.
That makes a lot of sense.
Put us in a timeline that's a little bit more.
Can, can we have. Spent a bunch of time, a few months ago, going through the, that fun document and trying to sort things out and finding, trying to find what was required in our bylaws and everything. And it was a bit of a.
I think it's.
Christina's also nodding, so I don't, I don't know.
No, you guys are so, you're all so brilliant. I was, I like keep almost saying things when you say them, so I don't need to. But no, I just appreciate that we're talking about this, because I think I'm always struck by like, what is a policy versus a protocol? And like, you know, protocols are changeable and like, I think that we could be doing things differently. And so I just appreciate that we're looking at it. And I swear I will try to look at this before next month. I am really interested in this and so I, I'm, I think it's a good idea, Virginia, to send it to the, uh, Ansel Glink before then. But I would be happy to try to take a lead on this.
Ansel Glink, there are employment attorneys. Are they also just general muni?
Okay, because I was like, I just want somebody who actually understands like municipal code and.
And they will have all the tools to go look for the thing that says that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. No, but I would rather spend.
It can be far easier than any of us.
Need to work with a library. Five hundred an hour with a muni who like knows this stuff versus spending like four fifty.
I mean, they're the same people who help us with all of our other policies, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a little bit scary and they work with a lot of libraries and they're kind of the library, yeah.
And municipal government's personal, yeah, they're, they're.
Yeah, definitely.
They're definitely.
Trusted.
Can I, can I suggest something that sounds like it, it belongs in a, in a sketch comedy thing, but I, which is that, is there, is there a chance that we actually need, um, I don't, is there another word for committee? Is there a smaller group of us, a, um, a cohort, a cohort, a smaller cohort
Massacres?
Who can meet, you know, like, who can bring those recommendations to the board? Do, do you know what I mean?
Why don't we see how much is left? Because I have an issue feeling that Ansel Glink is gonna send this back and it's gonna be like, you have this paragraph, this paragraph and this sentence. And there's gonna be a lot less for us to work with than what we're looking at here, I think.
Sure, but I, again, can we, can we clarify what, what you think it is that I'm, what kind of changes I'm talking about? Because I'm even saying the like language changes of adding statutes or trying to figure out like, um, where we need to have like a summary, even if none of it can be changed, right? But, but having those like clear, which is actual document working.
Right, but if they're going to be looking at what we can and can't change, they would have to look at the statute so they would be able to tell us which ones they want.
Which ones to look for.
So then.
Absolutely. So I'm not saying we do this before we get to absolute.
We just annotate those things in. I just, I thi- I think we're, I think we're adding complexity where it doesn't necessarily need to be yet.
What is it that you think I'm asking? What's the, what's the complexity?
Reviewing line by line?
Uh, no, I don't think we should do that until like our lawyers have told us literally like what's mutable and what's not. You, but you know what I mean? Like, I'm not saying we do that now. I'm just saying that, uh, let's say that document comes back. I don't think, i- if it comes back in a couple of weeks, I'm not, I'm saying that we don't just take like then one week to be done with it, right? Like I'm saying that it may need, um, I'm still.
I'm still working on the assumption that we're not gonna have it by November.
Yeah, me too. Okay, good. I thought that, were you trying to have it done by, by November?
No, I think it's trying to get.
Help me, you know.
Ansel Glink as quickly as possible so that we can start looking at things.
Yes.
Okay, but we're not trying to have it done by, by the end of the October meeting.
We're trying to have. We're trying to have a truncated version that we can look at for the October meeting so that we can discuss things.
We can start having.
So that we can potentially have something for November, December. But also, I think if we're doing budget, like, let's do one big thing.
Yeah. That's, that's what I, I, add the ED search.
And I, I don't, I don't know, I don't get the sense that people are looking for this either though. Like, I, I don't know if people running, um, I don't, maybe you all are hearing that, but I'm not hearing like, let me see the bylaws and then I'll think about running. Um, so I don't know if that timeline is like as urgent as we think it is, but I think it is powerful to look at our bylaws. Like, we should do that. But sorry, what did you say?
No, I said I'm the nerd who looked for it. That's why I was concerned, so.
You did.
But I think, I think there is, I think there is value in, in, in working on this. And I, I completely appreciate where, in the, and the ranking of all of the other business that we have before us, including on this agenda. This is not the most time critical in terms of being in compliance and everything. I mean, technically, by even having this discussion alone puts us in compliance with reviewing this annually.
Well, except for the previous years.
Nine years, yes.
Yes, but it, it puts us, it puts us in compliance for twenty twenty-four.
Yes.
Yes, we are.
So I don't like, in, in, but I do think that ha- I don't want us to let this move to a back burner and then the warming plate and then, oh god, we, we, this was out all day, this one.
I mean, I mean, worst comes to worst, we don't have a meeting in December, which gives everybody a good long time to read over the walking two pages. And then we come up in January.
I mean, it's three.
But not once Ansel Glink is done, I'm telling you. Yeah, I think if we can, honestly, I can't get my brain past what is even gonna be left that we have a say in.
I, I agree that we, suspend for the conversation I'm talking.
My brain can't even get past there, because if Ansel Glink comes back and says like, you get to decide what the names of your officers are, like whether there's, if there's a dash between vice and president or not, that's your decision, like, then this isn't a conversation. But if they come back and they say, oh yeah, they're, you know, these are your options, this is the one that you chose and we have to like rehash whether or not we think that's the right option, then, but I, my brain can't get past like, let's see what's even ours to do before we decide how to do it, how long it's gonna take and where it falls in our priority line.
So two questions. One, Christina, you mentioned the question of what's, um, policy and what's protocol? I'm thinking, you know, how we can work, function. Um, you have some, that great article you sent us. Like, how, what's the best way to find that out?
So one of the things that I, this is the park districts, this is their manual of like how they run. So it's not their bylaws, but that's just like an idea of like kind of what's in practice versus what's policy. So I found that kind of helpful to see from another agency.
So.
Is this something you can send out? Do you have it digitally or is it like that?
You know, do you have more copies? But I can, I can certainly assume for a copy as well.
Okay.
Yeah, because I think that there are, I think there are, you know, there are, there is the bylaws. Yeah, cuz I think that there are, I think there are, you know, there are, there is the bylaws and our policies, which are are governing statutes, things. And then there is something like this that is a procedure manual or a practice manual, how we implement those specific frameworks that that can guide us. And I think that that something like this, which we've never had, um that that I've that I've known it here, uh would could be very helpful.
So just because Christina's not here, I wanna make sure she has a chance to answer.
I agree. Can you ask that question, though, again?
Just like you were asking about the policy versus um protocol and what are the sorts of things that we can kind of find ways to function that might be.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, like I I used to do a lot of collaboration work and and there's things that are kind of um. You you generally see in large groups, there's always decision making, there's always like consensus, there's always, how do you get engagement? Like, how do you facilitate discussion? I think those are the things we can get creative with and I I would love to be a part of that. I um have some tools, I have some resources I can offer, but that's like that would come next. So I think it would start with like what do we have power over? And I would take like the opposite lens that Virginia said, like I think even if we don't, even if we can only change like three percent of those bylaws, like. That three percent really matters, I think, how we operate and how we run and how we keep ourselves moving and keep momentum and keep making action. So I know it might seem like very little to change, but I think it actually would make a very big difference. Um so I'm really glad we're doing this, I'm just gonna keep saying that. And, yeah, thanks.
I'm sorry, I hope you don't think I don't think it's important.
No, I know you think it's important, I just think like I just wanna emphasize that like those small changes make a really big impact with like how we move work forward. And I get excited thinking that we can, and as like a newer person of the board, that was the hardest thing for me to figure out, like what is just the norm versus like what is set in policy? And for the longest time, like I didn't know, there was something, I can't even remember now what it was, I I know we have this talk around like um around community comments and like. Who do we respond, do we not? Do we have this set? Is this just how we operate or is this set? And like those are the things, like as we're thinking about onboarding, maybe maybe four people, right? Like that is, we need to think about those things, cuz that was hard for me.
Yeah, I mean, there's also the whole uh the the main, the 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 main thing, which was about the, which is point six under Article Two, so two point six. Which is ensuring a representative selection of library materials, you know, and to me, that's a that to me, that's a scary thing that I would like. I mean, I don't know, my personal theory is if we if we, I I don't know how we, for I I I mean, is it supposed to be insure, first of all, instead of insure?
I have been sitting here being like, I don't care, I just need to get in here and to clarify certain languages, cuz it's driving me crazy.
Because those two things are very different.
Including the fact that we are not consistent with language in all this document.
But but those two things are very different, to say that we're we.
Yes, yes.
If if it's not with our stewardship to make sure that our materials have insurance on them, then you know, that's one thing.
Yes.
But if it's to ensure that there is a representative selection of library materials.
But I don't think that would be.
That comes to like, uh that comes.
That's out of our scope.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It seems way out of scope, but it's not bylaws, you know?
Could just be. Yeah, and it, yeah.
Do you know what I mean? So so that would be a first one to get some.
Full token.
I hear you, that that's something we can change and that is not established.
Or maybe maybe we maybe we leave it leave it as insure and we just make sure that we have insure.
But I I actually. I I mean, it would make more sense to me, weirdly enough, that it is to ensure ensure that we have proper insurance.
Yes.
Of the library facilities, because that's part of the budget and what we do is budget and policy.
One hundred percent.
And so that that makes sense versus like.
I'm just like, this is being recorded for the next people who look at this and have the exact same question, that this will have also.
So I had another question for Virginia and that's that you were wanting to make sure that people who were considering running have the information that they need.
Mm-hmm.
And so if we're thinking this isn't necessarily it, or we're not gonna have that ready in time for October twelfth to nineteen. Um, what can we do as a board? Both as Christina talked about, like the onboarding, you know, so both what you were talking about with people who are interested in running and onboarding. Like especially now that I go, we're not gonna get that.
Yeah, I think we, you know, Suzie had a plan for, you know, folks who wanted to run to come and talk to leadership staff. I think we try to reach our.
Be part of that, yeah.
Yeah, and and just roll that into one holistic.
And just make ourselves available.
A calendar, perhaps, of some kind.
Yeah, make ourselves available to answer questions.
And that's the good thing about that, is that something that can go out in all the.
Yep.
Email, yeah, all the newsletters, that's all of that.
Mm-hmm.
I also think this thing, and it hasn't really gone around, I'm sorry, I've been sitting on it, but the thing that Suzie sent sent around this flyer from the park district about serving um. So so now this can sit with me for for the rest of the evening, okay, uh about the thing that Suzie sent around about the um. It's it it seems almost like like a basic rundown of what it means to be a board member, um you know, the the flyer that you sent.
From the from the district, yeah.
Yeah, from the park district, if we had a version of that uh for the for the library, that would be, that to me would be a good placeholder for the kind of questions that.
I do, and I also wanna make a note, but one of the things that came up a cog was, these were put together by library administrator or by park district administrator.
Yeah.
So not, you know, the governing bodies doing the work, but we're doing the work as an administrative team and then presenting to you guys. And so, I mean, I think there is space in this to kind of work together with your administrative team to come up with that, cuz that that manual is so comprehensive. We were like, who came up with this? Like, who wrote this? Cuz it's a lot of work for a library.
Yeah.
Um, and they they also have a lot of advisory committees, which I thought was really wonderful, so the community advisory committees. Um, and that's how they really do recruit a lot of their new board members, because they get an opportunity to kind of learn a little bit about it.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Alright, so I have I have sent the email to Ansel Glink, asking them to have staff review, uh and it said, I said in the email, essentially identify. What is, you know, what is tied to statute that we, you know, can add, subtract, change or not? Um, cuz I think there's there might be things, in my mind, there's probably many things that we cannot remove, or at least we can remove a reference, but it's we still, it still is us. You know, we still have to comply with state law, and it's like, we can change if we want, but state law's gonna trump it, so.
Why why make our document feel that, right?
Why write sign, that's gonna be.
Yeah, or, yeah, yeah, so, okay.
Okay.
If we're and then so we'll all, we'll get that that feedback from Ansel Glink and from there, uh we'll, uh as soon as that hits my inbox, I will forward that. To the rest of the board, so we can begin to look at what things, um but if there are, besides policy. If there are other committees, uh at board committees or perhaps advisory committees.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that might be, we might want to look at establishing going forward. Please write those down, you know, shoot, you know, think about those so that we can have that discussion. And I think one of the important pieces is, I think I have learned with this particular group, is definitely making sure, um. When it was the RFP committee or these other things, is making sure that the committee has a clear focus. In terms of what they're gonna be working on and not just sit as a policy committee or the finance committee, like what, you know? And it doesn't have to be, you know, a dissertation or a the, you know, a thesis, uh uh but as much as a sentence or two as to what it will be. The idea, the idea of their work, so that, you know.
What is like their deliverable to the board?
It could, yeah, you know, it doesn't have to be extensive, but just so that when we put, if we put, if we put it in there. People people will, the next board or the board after knows what it's there for. And and understands that there is a, that that there, why we put it in there, you know, author's notes, you know?
Yeah.
So. From there, um, if we're ready with that?
Well, one thing about committees, one thing that I think is important, if we do, if we have more committees doing more of the work and then reporting. That in the point where the the committee is reporting to the full board, that there's opportunity for discussion. Because I've heard reports of other nearby libraries where committees, like they they just do all the work, they come in and they're all they're, there's an opportunity for is is a vote.
Mm-hmm.
And how that can become problematic.
True.
Given particular structures of the board.
Understand understandable. Alright, um, the next item, then moving in, it will be the the executive director search update by Koya. Our friends from Koya there, hello.
Hello. Hi, everyone. Can I just dive in?
By all means.
Thank you, thanks for having me um here today to just give you a brief update on the executive director search. I'm going to start from the beginning, where we um had a meeting with a search committee to kick this off and um in August, actually. And since then, we, Koya, have embarked on a pretty extensive needs assessment process and that process is really talking to um, you know, leadership team, management team, staff members, affinity groups. Sharing a survey with the staff and the board and just to be even more specific, um we went to an all-staff meeting. We uh um had a survey sent, like we had mentioned, we had sixty-minute group meetings with the co-interim EDs, with the leadership team, with the management team. Um, and then we received thirty-four responses from staff on a survey, um six from the trustees. We had four different um affinity group meetings with twenty-one attendees total. Um, and we had a number of one-on-one meetings, I believe nine one-on-one meetings with staff, another four one-on-one meetings with uh with trustees. And all of that was to get a sense of what is needed, what are people looking for in this next ED and using that information to develop a job description. Um, we have been working on that, we gave a draft to the search committee, I believe it was last week. Um, and there's actually been a fair amount of edits to it, which have been super thoughtful and really good. And when I look at this job description now, I feel like it has a lot of like color to it and richness and kind of like just gives a better sense of what this library is to the community. And so really excited about just the thoughtfulness that went in by search committee members to uh to this position profile. And so there was enough changes, though, that we're actually having a meeting on this coming Friday to talk through them, make sure that we understand what some of concerns that might have popped up. Um, you know, our timeline had us sort of finalizing the this position profile today, but I think we're just, we're a couple of days off on the timeline and I think it's worth. I think it's necessary just for that we can have that kind of final conversation on Friday and then from there, um. Once that position profile is, I believe finalized, it does need to go to the board to finalize, that's correct, it's not the search committee, it's the board. So once that's finalized, um we will launch uh the public search in the market and that's where things get really exciting. That will look like um the board and the staff will receive the position profile and some email communication, the link to the uh position. Some sample outreach language, in case you wanna send it out to your networks. Uh, I believe we're also gonna host office hours throughout this search, um and a community survey. I think those are the pieces that are gonna happen after the public launch, that um. That will be something that will be ongoing and kind of left open for uh community and for the staff. One of the biggest, I think, pieces of this needs assessment process, I will say, and this is not gonna be news to you, is like there's some hurt and pain and trust broken amongst. Uh, different parties and. I think by the transparency and the uh of this search process and the access that staff has had to Koya so far and continues to have is already. Kind of moving that needle is what it feels like um on our end, so I think we're off to a really great start. I'll just pause there to see what questions you might have.
Well, um.
Well, this is this is Matt, um, and I'm really glad that the that the search committee has been as thoughtful as it has been with all of this. I would just say that um, I think after after the Friday meeting, I'm not sure if I'm gonna be able to make it, I'm gonna do. I, we have a standing office meeting in our office at eleven thirty uh with our leadership team, so I'll probably join after that. Um, but uh if, depending on how that goes, I think moderator, I think I'd love to check in with you after that, cuz I'd like, I I don't wanna, if we're in a position. If the search committee feels that they can work through what they are doing this week, I don't wanna wait until our regular October board meeting to approve it. So I think we will look at a special board meeting to do the review of that position profile and job description to approve it by the board. So I think once that meeting happens on Friday, uh we'll assess what that, what the committee needs, feels like they need to do to get it ready to present to the board. And we can set a a date for that, and I've, so I just, I don't, I wanna keep us.
Yeah.
Moving ahead on that.
Yeah, we're definitely moving.
No, clearly, I mean, I'm not, you do not assume that I.
Yeah, it's just also a lot to make sure, you know, that we are not.
Yeah, I. Letting too much time.
Moving too fast and not getting.
Being deliberate, yeah.
Getting it right.
Look looking at the notes, we are being anything, you know, no one could claim that we are not being deliberate and thoughtful.
It's true.
I was gonna suggest the same thing, though, so I'm glad you said that, Matt.
Um. Yeah.
I think it's just shows that we're like to the community that we're moving, like as things wrap up, we also move forward, we don't wait till the next board meeting.
Yeah, no, absolutely, yeah.
And do you need a meeting to finalize the job description? Uh you do, it doesn't, it can't be done by email? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If we're gonna, if, yeah, if we're gonna have a vote on it, yes, we have to have a meeting, but I think the, I think that might be a question for the board is. Would we be comfortable with everyone reviewing it via email and signing off on it, uh or if we want, you know, if we feel like we need to have a vote? If we can, if people are comfortable reviewing it and seeing whether or not they're comfortable, you know, via email, I I don't know that we, it requires. I don't think I, I don't think there's a legal requirement for us to vote for it.
So I I guess we don't depend, leave it on how we're interpreting the bylaws. So, um, you know, if we talk, if we talk about, uh, they present, the committees present non-binding recommendations to the board.
Yeah.
So like. To to say that this is the position profile that we recommend is one thing, and then to actually launch that position profile that leads to the executive director candidates is another. I don't know that that's not more than a recommendation.
But this, I feel like this is the tension of committees, though, is like we wanna respect and trust that you all, oh, I'm sorry, someone else talked.
Yeah, let's hear Christina.
Christina, sorry, can you repeat that, please?
I just, that's the tension with committee work, right? It's that like, you, there is the possibility that you all do this work and then present it to the board and the other board members say, hey, wait a minute, let's go back. I think that we're all pretty aligned with what's been going on and I don't think that'll happen, I hope not. Um, but I think like that was, someone else brought up, like the other, the other flip side of the committee work is that what Suzanne said, that things can go awry in a different way. So I think just noting those tensions, we can be thoughtful.
And and the special needs.
On the side after saying it?
I didn't hear that question, sorry.
I was just wondering if we could do our, finalize our work on Friday and send it out and then if board members can.
Kill me review and then everybody individually respond to you, whether or not we feel comfortable taking a vote and then from there you can schedule this press conference.
Review and then just.
But, but I don't, I I think that, I think, I think that the, whether or not it's appropriate policy or protocol cannot depend on the content of this job search.
Oh, I didn't mean it.
The the, do you know what I mean? Like the draft.
There's a question of whether they were comfortable or not, whether it was.
Well, then that should be immaterial, that ought to be tethered to the actual content of the position.
So.
I I I I I hear what you're saying and I agree with you, I think I think it is a matter of. I I feel like, yeah, I think that there is value in in having, you know, even if it's just a brief meeting where we're all together on the record. Saying, I'm good with this, I'm good, you know, I'm wrong with this, and it could, and it, you know, and just say. You know, it could even just be by consensus, but I do think I want to, I don't want anyone to say that they didn't get a chance to. Voice a concern or ask a question.
Right.
And in front of the group, so I think after the meeting Friday, I'll I'll talk with moderator and we'll see where. How much work may need to be done to to be in a place where it can be in the board and then I will send out a survey. For a special meeting date before our October regular meeting. So that we can get get this in front of everyone and get it launched. As soon as possible.
Yeah. Thank you again to everybody who's been on the search committee and to FOIA and everyone who's put so much time into this, thank you very, very much for doing all that work.
And I wanted to thank Tricia and also Amber who's not, who's not here, I guess she gets to have days off or something, I don't know, but like. I should be running over there, but like I I do, I do, they've been just absolutely incredible and and put in so much, put in so much work, so. We appreciate it.
Our pleasure and we're just getting started too. Anything else or any other questions?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Then I guess I will see you Friday, some of you on Friday.
Yeah, thanks Tricia, see you Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Alright.
What is in the chat?
Let me see if I can.
Oh gosh.
You're in the chat.
Who knows?
It's like a pirate, I don't invite it and now you think they're like, do you want to continue this service? All you have to do is pay us this for a month, I was like, no, please, I don't want the service to continue and it, we're gonna show it anyway.
So shows up.
Maybe I take it now. Get rid of that, I'll serious.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, I, since we were just talking about calendars and everything and it's a, it should be a very quick thing. I would like to just jump and move up the November board meeting date. Currently, we are scheduled to meet the twenty sixth. We can move up to the nineteenth, which is a Tuesday, a week early, week earlier.
I'm wondering if there's anything with the search that may, I don't have the, I don't have their. The timeline.
I have it somewhere. Well, we should.
You know what, it doesn't, we have to redo the timeline anyway on Friday, so we'll.
Okay.
We'll, let's do that and then we can move some of this stuff around, in that case, we're not usually meeting on Tuesdays, right?
No, I just didn't, in terms of if there's something we needed to do on a particular, you know, like we were just now.
Oh, we, and we, we had already, in one of our meetings, we'd already signaled to them that that date would probably change.
We did, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Does the nineteenth work?
Works for me.
Yep.
November nineteenth. Why do I have it on that day?
Because I think we may, I think we may have to talked about the possibility of moving up that week, but we did not take official action, you were just being ahead of the game.
No, it's actually like the invitation.
Did you move it?
No, my my invitation is unchanged.
Yeah.
My invitation is on the change.
Yeah, it's on the twenty seventh.
Maybe I.
Suzanne's over there being proactive.
Just, oh, I appreciate that, so Christina, does that work for you?
Uh, it's not ideal, but I can make it work.
So, alright. Thank you, so is there a motion to move our November board meeting from the twenty sixth to the twenty ninth?
Second to nineteenth.
I'm sorry, to the nineteenth from the twenty sixth. I apologize, I just, move by Maya, second by Virginia, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it is approved, thank you, everyone. Alright, um, next item is. Proposals related to, or no, I'm sorry, about the information systems policy.
First off, thank you, Billy, for rewriting this in real English, I felt much more comfortable reading it. I feel like it says the things that it needs to say and it had all the caveats of. Talking about FOIA and talking about the penalties, so thank you for taking our feedback and for doing the English to English translation that makes this accessible.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think it's the.
That's good.
Is the sentence.
Yeah, it was a bit of work, yeah.
No, really, this?
I see no evidence of that.
So are we, so how are we, how are we feeling, is, are there any points of concern?
Well, this November, this November election is a bit of, oh, you mean about this document?
About this policy, yes, we can. That afterwards over drinks.
The only. Place that caught me really was the human firewall. Under cybersecurity.
It's language from our training that we do for all new staff and and. They're, that's what they're told, is like they, their last line of defense from stopping a cyber attack.
Okay.
Like one, one. That's what staff are told during during the training and it's pretty clear that, you know, one staff clicking one link in an email. Could could make all this work or not, you know, and so it's like we have to press upon the staff like, like you have to take this seriously and we're actually doing more internal training now. I'm also with. Is it October is cybersecurity awareness, yeah, October is Cybersecurity Awareness Month. We even have a a way to to track who's doing the best job reporting phishing emails. They're simulated phishing emails, sorry, they're simulated phishing emails. And it's kind of fun and if you, depending on how fast you click on the, on the, on the button to record it. You know, you can get a higher score and the person who gets the highest score at the end of the month gets a mug and the mug will say something like, I, I'm a.
We're phishing, not phishing.
I'm a cyber, I'm a cybersecurity professional or something like that.
Okay.
Please tell me that you come up with the.
But but I, I, I get it, it is kind of like striking language, I do understand.
But it's a callback to something that. The language is outside of what we do, because the, and we don't build our own security.
No, we use NOBE4 as a learning platform and phishing platform, yeah.
Please tell me that you create the simulations, because do you include them?
No, they, they, but I will tell you, they're really good, like they, they get all of it, I got, I know it's gotten me one time. Yeah, and actually I can see who who clicks on stuff, but anyways, it's, and the email that you get, it's like. I don't know how they know, but like, how do they know I was just resetting my password on LinkedIn and then like they send me like this LinkedIn thing, I went, oh, okay, yeah.
Can I tell you that.
But is the button to report it.
Also.
Security phishing, ah, I'm just saying.
The fake button.
Report it.
The, the button is in our Google Chrome extension, it's like.
It's the little red fish.
It's a, it's a.
Oh, there's that moment where you're like, okay, I want to click this, because.
Yeah.
Do I click it?
Can I tell you that my, my kids' homework, not homework, but his, when he's doing health right now is spotting, he's in sixth grade, is spotting phishing. You know, like so he just completed a worksheet about, completed a worksheet about like how. Oh, you tell that something is.
The red flags of phishing.
Yeah.
I was, I was on a. National cybersecurity thing today that it, that goes on, it's every month with the national things and it's. The way they're talking about these, these, you know, you know infiltrations and stuff like that and these, and these schemes to. Are we getting, becoming so sophisticated and it's, I'm glad that we have this in place and that prompts me to follow up, so. We approve, you know, we approve the policy, how does that then flow into like the practice and procedure? That you roll out to the, you know, to. This after this, you know, guide into like other documents that, you know, present this, because, you know, this is. Not how every procedure is gonna work for, you know, HR and everybody else, so. So like you approve this policy, then then what happens, like how do we integrate this into what we're doing? Yeah. So the thing is, we're doing a lot of this already, our IC department already has a lot of this already set up, there's nothing like, like staff can't download. Software without it being scanned or can't download it on their own, like these are things that like, we wrote the policy in a way, like if we were to happen to change vendors or or change, you know, if we do IT. We're doing a lot of this stuff already. I don't know if this is gonna help my point or is this. Let's, let's.
No, it's, it's, you know, a lot of the stuff that's in the policy is how we practice it, it's been in practice for a long time, this policy and been updated in twenty two years.
That's, that's what I was gonna say, I wasn't referring to the twenty year old policy.
I would say like we have, we must have like a click.
Well, we can do a lot of these things for a long time, so.
Policy policies, because I've like used the computers here and it's like there's a little.
There's a separate policy for the, for the public, you know, it's interesting, but yeah.
Right, right.
Yes, yes.
But the IC department has been staying up to date and keeping us, keeping us safe. And now we have a policy that reflects what they're, what they're doing.
So it sounds like practices preceded the policy.
Yeah.
So I have, I I actually have. Questions about some of the language, a general question about the use of we.
Yeah, that was a, it was a question that.
No, now I want to know what you think my question.
No, we, we, we had, we had, we had discussions internally, like what to use, like what's gonna be like the most approachable, most direct, most concise. And it was to say, who's we, right, is it library, is it the leadership team, is it the board, is it, you know, and. I mean, if it didn't say we, it would say library.
Well, I, I mean, so obviously you understand that when you say we, it, it to me sounds like. There are people to whom this applies and then there are people, you know, and that's just legally not true, right, like you're all, the leadership team. Is also under this policy, you know, so that, that this distinction between we and you, to me, in addition to like the total thing, which is a whatever, but like. Even legally, like who's the we that's separate from the you.
We, we is the library, you is the employee, you know, if that's, and we did that from like a readability standpoint, like you can, it's much better to, much easier to read it that way.
Rather than having employee, library.
The library and staff member, we use staff member in our policies, you know, the library and staff member.
It softens it.
We did have an attorney review this again with the, with the updated one and. She said it's, it's a solid policy, like that, the, the, no comments about the, the, you're using the we. But yeah, it's, it's going back to like the work it takes to take something that like an attorney would write and then knowing what it actually has to say and saying it in a way. That's, that's a more easily understandable for, for.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it takes a lot of work.
I know, I know, as a, as a writing instructor, one hundred percent.
Third paragraph under confidentiality and monitoring second sentence.
Oh, no.
It's, it's like minor and I would, I would ask if you would be open to perhaps cutting it, because I actually find it like a weird sentences. Using a personal password does not give you privacy rights in the library's systems or data, it kind of, it, for me, there's an ambiguity there. Because, and I think it's, I think is what you're trying to say is even using a personal password. Will, like, does not give you. You know, it, it does not override this need, because we might need to override the password, right, for security purposes and it's completely legitimate. But when it, when it, as it's written, one, I, I find it hard. Because of the, the privacy rights piece and we live in a country where we don't actually have either a real national standard or state standard. So that will give, that gives me a little pause and then also it, it kind of suggests like the library's systems as in like to the library's like. Inner workings and systems and whatnot.
Technological systems.
Right. And it's such a minor point, it is, I, I kind of leave, I think you're like giving me the side eye.
No, no.
I think I just.
I'm going back to like the, what did the original language say, because I'm also like.
Well, and that was, and I think the original language is where I also had problems at the, because it said like, because it's like, again, there is like this right to privacy and I was like, well, that's not. Type, you know, it, I, it kind of rubbed me.
It's very, it's similar, yeah.
Yeah. But other than that, I, I do like. I, I don't have.
But what we can change it to, like opposed.
Yeah, 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 give me one moment.
Because I wouldn't want to lose. The fact that like.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if you, if you set your own password, it doesn't mean that like, that because it's your password protecting, it doesn't mean that.
We don't get access.
Like that we, that we wouldn't get access to or it's not, or that, that's yours, it means it's still the library.
Yeah, so it would be like something like.
Does that preempt the other?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's why I said you could cut it, because we reserve the right to override. How about you say, how about you just cut that sentence and say, we reserve the right to override. A per, uh, your personal password.
I think it's about making, again, making it accessible to people, because if we start with, you know, supersede, we're getting away from the readability. If we just leave, we reserve the right to override your password if necessary, I don't think that. Calls out the, even if it's your password, even if you have selected this password.
Change it to your, your personal password.
I think, I understand what you're saying, that it says the same thing, but I think when you're interpreting it from somebody who's not reading policies often.
So what if we combined the first and the third and skip the second, so this, we may require you to disclose your password or other login information or. And or we reserve the right to override your password if necessary, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah, and then it's just a little bit clearer and a little bit more straightforward type of thing.
Does the we have to be consistent, it probably does, right?
Is there places not?
Well, no, I'm just saying that this is one place where the library.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I think, and then from the beginning, we is the, like we say, the open public library at the beginning, we know technology and so it's we, it's, it's.
Has the part of the library, we, so that's, okay.
Right, I just didn't know if you can, if you can go back to the library at any point or is that?
I, I didn't, I didn't, just for consistency sake, but. So, moderator, could, could you, I missed the.
The compromise.
I believe it was, I can send it to you in a moment.
Okay.
But let me make sure it's right, we may require you to disclose your password or other log information for access or security purposes comma. And reserve the right to override your password if necessary.
That's what we want to say, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and so it'd just be cutting like that middle bit.
Alright. Christina, did you have any comments, I just want to make sure we give you a chance, if you have anything.
No, but thank you, Billy, I really appreciate you making those edits.
Okay. With that, if there are no other concerns. Is there a motion to approve the policy with the amended language that was just mentioned and is being sent to Billy?
I am sending it, it is sent, so moved.
Moved by Virginia, is there, seconded by Maya, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, any objections, the policy is approved. And without a, without an expiration date. Maybe we should have ones.
Should we have noted the cancellation of the previous?
This is a revised version of it, at the top of the policy.
You said stupid. Okay, so we're not even, oh, I see that, got it.
It's a, it's a revised version of the August version.
Beautiful.
Alright, thank you, everyone, I really, I appreciate that and, you know, for your feedback to Billy and Billy, thank you for all the work that you did in. In creating that, it was, I'm sure. At times frustrating and tedious to try and find the right language, you know, just, just in terms of like the translation of. It's a better policy now, I mean, it's a better policy now, it's, 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 to me, it says the same thing, but it says things in a way that the staff can read this and understand it, I, I appreciate that. I did have a question though, and I, we have, you know, the social media policy that we didn't get to. And I wonder if I, if we were to do the work to make it read like this updated public, the information systems policy. You know, could we bring it back in front of the board at some point, I mean, it might be early next year, but. Yeah. I think, I, I would always welcome.
I think I I would always welcome pop, uh, policy. I I I don't wanna speak for anybody else. I personally would always welcome policy suggestions and updates from the staff, if that served the, um.
I think that's part of our job, isn't it?
Yeah, but it's, but I think it's, you know, I don't want, I don't want you to ever feel like, I I would say, I don't think I ever at the table, like, a a shooting down of of any, of that, of that policy. I think there was discomfort with the, with the language as it existed at the time, but I I do feel like it is something that the board would be open to seeing a revised version.
Yeah, and I think I do, you know, I kinda wanna point this as a point to think about. When we talk about the internet use policy, I think for us, we're like, well, this is how we've been operating, and it seemed to really ruffle a lot of feathers on how it was presented, but I think for us, it's, this is what we're doing, and we do have social media guidelines, and we'll follow here too. So for us, the social media policy is just putting a, from our, you know, clear, like distinction, it's a policy, but we do have procedures that we follow, you know?
Hmm.
From an employee and or their standpoint, and so I think the social media policy has brought up, been brought up by our HR people, our lawyers, and saying like, this is, you know, we, as a library, you obviously have a social media policy, and we're kind of like, no, we don't. So, you know, I think it's something that's, it's, it's kind of the next, next way of saying.
Right, well, I mean, I I don't think we should have a discussion about something that's not in, not in practice.
Hmm, right, good point, good point.
So let's, I I would.
Hold up. So, but I do, but I do, I do appreciate the question. Um, yeah, we, yeah, we shouldn't get too, you know, into a discussion about it, you know, the specifics of it, I do, I I is everybody okay with them, bringing that back?
Yeah, I.
Yes, 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 please.
I, we all have social media policies and.
Cool.
I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that we don't have it out there.
Yes.
Yes.
Understood, understood. Me too.
I just regret that even having a policy isn't protection.
What?
Well, no, that's.
No, that's.
It's a messy, messy world right now.
None, none of the waivers are, we we sign at any of the places we take our kids, actually prevents us from suing them.
Yes, that's true.
As a, as the son of a personal injury lawyer. Those, I I speak from experience. Um, not that I was ever injured in, in back there in suit, but my dad is dealt with that, and he's like, yeah, let's don't hold up. Um, all right, draft budget. That is starting on page sixty seven.
When, before we jump into that, um, because the memo, it looks like it was an email sent out to everyone, but I didn't receive that email, so I just wanted to check, was that an email that went to everyone?
No, I think it's a memo.
It's just the memo, okay. Just wanna make sure, because there was another email I thought I lost, and I was worried my spam was doing too much, but thank you.
Good question, though, because now, now it's making me look at my spam, because I know something got caught last month, that was. Okay. All right, so our budget, version two.
Yes, um, as as a reminder, um, I did, in the top part of that memo, uh, saying what the, mind what the process is, um, this is our second meeting to talk about the budget. Um, you know, the last meeting, we talked a lot about the revenue and the people and capital expenses. Um, this is more of a free for all, like, like, yeah, I'm, I've taken, I've taken the restriction, I've taken the restriction off, let's, let's let the questions fly. Um, but but just know that in draft two, it's, it's very similar to what you saw in draft one, but with, um, a couple notable changes. Um, I think, one is gonna stick out to you, you know, uh, the biggest will be the the revenue, um, the property tax revenue. The draft one increase was a three percent, um, for the property tax levy, and we have the three point two percent, um, in the draft two. That point two percent was necessary, because we had some additional expenses that we, um, uh, wanted to make sure we, uh, covered, um, and and budgeted for appropriately that we did not know as, know as well when, um, creating draft one. Uh, when I talk about additional expenses, um, you know, finding out about the COYA, um, the COYA executive director search fees, there will be, um, somewhere between six to ten thousand dollars estimated, uh, fees that happened in twenty twenty, um, twenty twenty five. So that's reflected in here, uh, in the current time. Also, we haven't talked about this yet, but there, um, is in, uh, um, there's a, I don't know if it's a statute law, I think it's just an enforcement of the law, our, our, um, website needs to be ADA compliant by, um, April of twenty twenty six. Correct me if I'm getting me that was wrong, but it, um, but that work needs to happen in twenty twenty five.
Yeah.
And and so, um, we don't have, we have a lot of expertise on, 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 like, in our current staff, but the expertise to be in compliance with ADA, who's gonna rely on some consultants. And the fees are ranked, like, we're looking at a lot of different options, but we wanna make sure we have enough to cover that work, um, in there.
Okay.
But those are two, like, notable changes, um, or, those are notable changes from from draft two.
Um, yeah, so you said there's two, I was wondering if there's any more, because the EDPs is like six to ten thousand dollars?
Yes, it's.
The search, right? A- a- actually, I'm confusing two different points I wanted to make. One was the, 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 what we're paying COYA.
Hmm.
The six to ten thousand dollars, which is nothing, which is not nothing, but it it doesn't seem to be.
Um, most of those payments are happening now, um, in twenty twenty four, so, um, but there's five thousand dollars, there's a final payment and a five thousand dollars that'll happen once the new ED is, starts or signs a little offer letter. Um, but there's also, um, for every month that we retain COYA, they also have a one thousand dollar direct, um, direct cost, like, um, what is it? Um, just like to set, to set, um, the fee that they, it's got all the costs, a thousand dollars a month.
And it could be travel costs.
And then also the travel costs, if we had, if anyone remember, COYA has to travel, we had to pay for the cost, and so I don't know exactly what that would be, but assuming the search is wrapping up in the early part of next year, I think six to ten thousand dollars is a reasonable.
So, I'm I'm sorry, I'm trying to do some really quick math, so, three percent, which is what we're asking for, right, like a three percent increase of our budget of twelve million dollars, is about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars? Is that about right to you?
Approximately, it's actually less, um, the three percent, um, the three percent increase in our tax levy was, was just a one line, I don't know, eleven million, eleven million forty five.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out the, what percentage increase is the six to ten thousand dollars? Because the other thing that I'm thinking about, uh, to to get to the point two percent increase, you know, from, from the last budget draft that we saw. And the other, because the other point that I wanted to think about, all right, I I feel like I forget, I'm about to ask you, um, was if we were, we have, I know that you have budgeted a certain salary band for the executive director.
Hmm.
Uh, but we're not expecting to pay that executive director for the months of January, I mean, like, our search is not expected to be.
Yeah, right. We budgeted, we budgeted for the full year, for the salary.
You did budget it, okay.
Yeah, it's one of those things that like, even if the position is open, you still wanna budget for that salary, make sure you have that that buffer.
Sure, yeah. Yeah.
Um, also, that's, like, that buffer that we count on, like, when, if that goes under, um, if that isn't spent, then it gives us a little bit of wiggle room throughout the year, but also, um, uh, if, assuming we, we, all of our revenue comes in, that'll be, um, money, that'll be surplus, basically money that we can then put into potentially, because we have the capital reserve, um, that's where we're starting to look at now, is potentially in the second half of next year, we can talk about actually setting up a capital reserve fund. Um, so those are, those are the, those are the, um, savings to the, what you just described, those are the savings to the, uh, budget that, like, that we kinda count on, so like, when something doesn't go our way on something other side, it even's out.
The the point two percent turns out to be just under twenty two thousand with hundred.
What I was just, for every, for every point one percent, it's about eleven, a little over eleven thousand dollars.
Okay.
So it's twenty two thousand dollars of expenses were added to this, to this budget.
Gotcha, thank you, that's, that's.
Yeah, COYA fees, the additional for the, um.
The website.
The ADA, um, compliance for website, and, um, the unemployment compensation, um, I bumped that up a little bit, because I I feel like Illinois' experience, which, um, uh, and also, and also our current experience, it influences our rate, and so I just wanna make sure there's enough to cover that.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm.
I had a question on utilities. Last year, we got really surprised by the price of gas skyrocketing. And I see that we didn't budget for what we would spend this year.
Hmm.
Um, how confident are we that we're not gonna see the same, uh, price increase?
Yeah. Um, so Suzie and me, you've heard Matt describe this, you wanna attempt to describe everything, like, and try not to talk so much.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, great, that's. So, um, going into twenty twenty four, that was the first, um, year that we were going to have, we're gonna run the boiler, operate the HVAC system as we're supposed to, as the building was designed, and then run the boiler year round. Which sounds like you shouldn't be doing that, but that's actually the way it's designed to work, and if Matt Bargi was here, he'd be able to explain why that is. But because you have to run the boiler year round, you have to pay for gas year round, and so not having any historical data to, like, we've never done that before, we didn't know how much it was gonna cost, we built in some padding, that that was, the twenty twenty four budget was a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, right? But what Matt is actually projecting we're gonna spend in in twenty twenty four is ninety thousand dollars. And so, uh, we did account, there is a, if you go from the projection of ninety thousand to the budget of twenty twenty five, ninety, ninety five thousand, there's actually an increase over projection. So we feel confident that the ninety five thousand is is there and is enough to cover our gas.
Good point. It, getting back into my previous job, working for CBR.
I was about to ask you anyway.
And you're like, there are big buildings like this, where there is constant presence and a shifting, and the, like, literally, buildings like this have their own atmosphere in a, in a, in a, in a way that the systems that design are, are an order of magnitude more complicated than we we have in our homes. And running these systems year round actually makes both systems more efficient. It makes both the heating and the cooling more efficient.
Because you're not doing the ramp up, ramp down, switch this, switch that.
Exactly. It's it's a balance, it's a balance of the systems, and so you also end up being more efficient on not just gas cost, but electricity cost, because the systems are working, you know, they're, they're, because we also did, um, a few, was it four? Before, it was, it was before COVID, like, our reconditioning of the system where they came in and, um, I think it was Jamison, came in and did a like, a whole reconfiguration of the electrical system and the programming for the HVAC and the heating to optimize it better for how the building's actually being used right now. So it it is, like Billy said, and I think Matt said, when he told us about his lecture, it is incredibly counterintuitive to when you think about how you run your home, but this, this building is not a, is not a simple scale of a house, of of our experience, so that's just, that's what it is. It's it's weird, but it it, the, the science works.
Okay.
Yeah, and Matt's been doing a lot of work, uh, him and his team, along with contractors too, uh, get the HVAC system running, which should be, I think Lee even reported on it, and she took priorities report, some of the work that happened. Like, it's like simple words that she's saying, but also, like, but what's, how, what's happening in the building is, um, when you walk through the front vestibule, you're just not like walking into a wind tunnel. I don't think you've ever experienced that, where you walk in, it's like a wind tunnel?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, notice if you feel a wind tunnel anymore, and and like some of the work that's been done has been to decrease that, like, we shouldn't be operating with the land of vacuum, you know, and so. Um, yeah, so there's just a lot of, a lot of great improvements. Anyway, so the the number, we're, we're confident. I I checked and rechecked with Matt, because he's got his costs going down for total facilities management, you know, um.
Yeah, I saw that, that's right.
Yeah, but it, you know, a lot of that's driven by that, um, you know, not knowing what the natural, how much natural gas we'd actually use in twenty twenty four, but now we have a year of data, and so we can make it more realistic.
Okay. I have a, thank you, question from, that's probably meant more for Matt, but related to the the HVAC. The, um, garage is always really hot. Like, summer and winter, like, winter, my, the the thermometer in my car, the temperature is always like, like, are we wasty? Is too much heat going into the?
Those are, those are great questions. I noticed that myself, um.
Because I, I was so fun, like, are we burning money here?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't, I don't know any.
Okay, somebody can go ahead of that.
But I, but I love asking Matt questions and getting him learning and learning from that problem, but, um, it's a good point.
Those could be the heat sinks for the, like, what, like, if you ever go like the back of it, as you're, as I'm thinking about this, it's like, you ever put your hand behind the, behind your refrigerator?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And when it's warm, because that's where the heat is going, that is being pulled out of your refrigerator. Maybe that's where some, that that's the equivalent, maybe there's something down there that I'm just not recognizing, but that's a good point, I think getting an answer would be helpful, because, I mean, I do appreciate it in winter that my car gets defrosted. All the ice and, all the ice and snow melts off my car when I'm down there.
It is the only time when I, when my car might actually get worn in the winter. So we do not have a garage.
Okay.
Um, I have, uh, so I think we've talked about this, but we didn't talk about it in the meeting la, we didn't, we didn't talk about this in the meeting last month. Um, but I wanted to, because it was like a specific line item, but I wanted to maybe circle back to the, um, the expenses in terms of, uh, compensation to wages and salaries, uh, that to, you know, obviously, what our budgeted amount for in this next year is actually just numerically less than what it was budgeted for this year. And and yet, at the same time, we have, uh, we're seeing that it sits alongside a three percent salary increase for our current staff.
Hmm.
So I was wondering, I, you explained it to me, but I was wondering if you can explain how we're we're getting there.
Yeah, I think that, what I would say is, um, we've made, we've had some changes, you know, this year, so every time someone, someone leaves the, you know, through, through attrition, um, we will look at that position and say, how how do we wanna fill this position? And this has happened throughout, I mean, every time this this happens, uh, we take a look, and there are, generally, there are some cost savings, depending on what decisions that we make. Uh, even if you, let's say, someone who's been here for ten years, and we hire someone who's only, only has a couple years' experience, or at a lower salary, so we have that churn. Um, but also, uh, note that our projection, um, for twenty twenty four is not the full budgeted amount of six million, six, six hundred fifty thousand, it's, uh, actually six million, three eighty four. Um, so through, like, knowing that we were going to have to create a balanced budget in order to start, um, in order, in order to start, um, you know, not stressing out our cash flow, and, um, start actually putting money away for for capital expenses. Um, we knew this, you know, was it last year at this time, and what's the largest line of your, of your budget? It's, it's, it's staff, it's people. And so, knowing that, you can, you have, since last year, we started at the same, and every time someone leaves, we make a decision on how best to fill those positions, and through doing that, we, we generated a savings, which then we were, we invest that money into, um, the staffing, staff increases. If we hadn't been doing this, you'd be looking at, what is it, um, approximately uh, two point eight percent would be, I think about, I think it's like two to three hundred thousand, like, two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. Two hundred thousand dollars on top of, um, you know, the current budget, so you're looking at like a, you know, a two point eight percent increase in this line. And there's just no way that we could have balanced the budget without, without making those, um, without making these decisions over the last, over the last year.
So you're, uh, leaning on the attrition, right?
Attrition, um.
And and reorganizing it in its way.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, to, you know, if, without going into all the specific examples, but yeah, that's, that's one way. Um, the other is, you know, um, we've also had built in some, you know, um, over the years, we've built in some, some, some buffer when things like don't, like, it's so we don't feel every bump as we go down the road, and so I would say that this kind of slim trims that down a little bit, but I'm still comfortable with with it. Um, and I still feel that we can hire all the staff, we replace all the positions that we have now, and we're not looking to cut any more positions. And, um, the new ED comes in and says, hey, I want this position, this position, this position. And, um, the new ED comes in and says, hey, I want this position, this position, this position. We could, we have to, it's, it's, quite some difficult conversations, but, or hard conversations, to figure out how, how are we gonna do that? I feel like we could still do that and make that happen. And I remember a point that I wanted to make, um, at the end of the last meeting, uh, last month. I remember it now, because when we look at, like, we're looking at all these different line items, right? We look at these eighty different line items, eighty plus different lines. But when the board approves the budget, what they're, or when they, when you approve the resolution for the budget, you're approving the total number, the total expenditures of, uh, um, plus capital. Um, so twelve million, four eighty five six hundred, you're approving that large number. And then it's up to staff then to manage to that number, right? And I even, like, there's not gonna be a ton of wiggle room that we have with the, with the wages and salaries, but we do have it, you know, it's, it's there. And that's what I was talking about, like, when, um, you know, if you're concerned about certain lines, I, I, it's like, we'll meet that overall number, I know we will.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. So if I can, uh, so you're saying that it's not like there's, there is specific money in envelopes and you can't move the money from one envelope to, to another if you didn't need to? And that what we're approving is the, the larger thing and then it's going to be up to?
Yeah, but the wages and salaries are a large envelope though, so.
Yeah, it's the, it's the biggest one, I see.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, and it's there, it's there to make sure that our staff get paid, our staff will get paid. And, um, also, I guess I'm with a new ED, it's, I, I think, we're, we've, since I, since I started over seven years ago, we've, we've evolved as organizations, like, we're, we're, don't have the same positions as we did. We're not, they're not structured the same as we were seven years ago. And I look, I expect that the next ED will want to evolve even, it'll change more. And, and I'm confident that we'll be able to do that.
And has, do we have, we don't seem to have then, uh, the data, at least I'm not seeing it, about, um, the pay equity, you know, kind of the analysis that was being done in terms of the market.
It was in last month's, the quartile?
Yes.
It was, it was last month's, yeah.
Was it last month's?
Yeah, I didn't include it in this one, cause it was included in the last one, and I, um, um, this, it's the same information, nothing changed on that, on that front. It's still the two point eight percent, um, increase, it still makes the same movement for, um, uh, towards wage, wage equity in the market.
And we're addressing the, the lower ranges like we were before.
Yeah, yeah, um, I mean, people who are, people who are lower in their pay range are getting a larger pay increase than those who are higher in their pay, pay range.
And that, but that could apply to, that applies across all of the bands, all of the bands, so it's like, so it's, it's putting, putting those two pieces together, those, those, you know, it, it applies over a set of groups and not just one large group. I think, it, I always have to keep reminding myself of that when we're, when we're talking about that. It's, we're looking at this as, you know, several groups of, in these different pay ranges, so.
Yeah, because, I, I mean, to drive that point home even farther, I mean, our, our library clerks in grade one, um, making sure that they're, they're paid appropriately to the, to the market and library assistants in grade two, but also our librarians, or even like our, our managers, like, it's, it's, you have to make sure that they're paid appropriately. So if, also, one is the right thing to do, but two, if they were to leave, you have to be able to hire into that, that, um, position as well.
So making sure that we're keeping up with the market rate, so that we need people, we're helping something.
Yes, and, and, and we are, and we gave an average of four point four percent pay increases, um, uh, in, for twenty twenty four, beginning twenty twenty four. And now, um, because of, oh, and even higher increases in years previous, but because of that work, two point eight percent is required, um, required this year, or going into twenty twenty five.
So what are you, what are you looking forward from us going into next month? Where we're, I, where I'm hoping we will be in a position to approve this. What, what kind of guidance are you looking forward from the board on this?
Um, yeah, if, that's, I'm glad, I'm glad you bring, bring that up because I would like to, um, have all changes finalized, which I don't anticipate any other, or March swings on anything. What we would see in draft three is pretty much the same as what you see here, now include a resolution for the, for the board to, to vote on.
So are there, you, you say like not expecting any changes, are there any specific items, any, you know, the, the only one that comes to mind is insurance, but are there any other vendors that you're waiting to hear back on numbers or?
There, there are people that we're waiting on, but there, but I won't have those answers until November, December. And so it's, it's just, it's nothing, there's nothing, I'm not waiting on any, on my end, I'm not waiting on anything, pretty core numbers to change. The, or Suzie, I don't know if you have any, any outstanding, I think from an IT perspective, uh, I think we're, we're solid, um, yeah, so.
Is everyone comfortable with the direction of, of this document? And where we're headed with, and the explanations for where the, the changes that have been made?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Christine. Yes, I am as well, so, um, thank, thank you, everyone, thank you, Billy, thank you, Matt Arima, for.
No, not this one.
You, but you've taken, you've taken meetings with, with Billy and Suzie and Lee, that, that appears.
And, and for that, I think you need to thank them, so.
I, I think it's all, it's all.
You're pushing coming in, yeah.
Yeah, it's all, I just, yes.
But it's, but I, it would, but I think it is, it is, it is helpful, or that, I think that your feedback helped, you know, you know.
Cushion the book.
Yeah, it was, it was some, it was some early feedback that, that I think was, was definitely needed and helped us prepare, so.
Exactly, you don't wanna keep going down a well, and like Billy said, like, what kind of guidance? Like, we wanna make sure that this is in line with what you're thinking, you know? If you wanted a higher level or lower level, you know, those are, those are ultimately, that's a decision of the board, it's a left to twenty eleven.
Yeah.
Do we happen to know, um, not that it's a competition, but do we happen to know what the other taxing bodies, what they're, or what they're?
Um, so Linda, um, Linda Barnett, our, like, manager of accounting and finance, uh, she, she's had conversations with, um, I believe it's Donnagadeen at, uh, the Village, and, you know, and like, they're targeting that three percent, but, um, you know, will they stay there? And I guess that is still something that they're talking about, you know, um.
You seem to be ahead of the, of the process.
Well, we're, we're ahead of the process, I think, um, one, our budget, don't wanna say this, but it's, 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 it's simpler.
You're gonna judge this right now?
Um, but also, but we, but we have to get ahead of it because we have to give it to the Village, um, for their, for the inclusion in there, in that.
And the, the Village also has the, the ability to, you know, up fees in a way that we have chosen not to, as, as a, you know, parking rates and all of that, and, and all of those things that can, that, that collect those, that revenue without, and, and still look good at that. The school districts are capped by, by law as to how much they can, they can increase in a, in a given year, so they're, um.
Yeah, and, and I don't know what the township or, um, the park district is doing.
Yeah, I think, yeah, so, the park district has a pretty conservative history when it comes to their level, their levy, I'm sorry. Their levy, they, they've generally been on the more conservative side of what they, of what they've done.
So again, they do also have the option of fees.
Do you think, the township?
Oh, I thought you said, I thought you said park district.
No, I'm sorry, the township.
Oh, the township, oh, I thought, no, yeah, I did, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the, the, the park district, you know, a decision many years, several years ago to move a larger portion of their revenue to fees from their property tax, which has, um, has implications on it, on, uh, I would, I would personally argue the accessibility of people in the community to use some of those services.
Yeah.
But, um, that, but it does lower the property tax burden, the community at large. And so it's not our, not our fault.
Nope.
So, but we're, it, we're all in, I'm hearing consensus that this is a good draft and we look forward to, um, seeing the next version, uh, and hopefully approving it next month.
Yep, that's what I'll do. Um, and then one point I wanted to draw in the memo, which I didn't point out, just in case you hear about it. The capital expenses, um, so after the last board meeting, uh, Matt Barjew, uh, facilities director, got a call that our chiller number two is actually, potentially could be ready in twenty twenty four, which we budgeted for in twenty twenty four, and there's money for it in twenty twenty four. So it's possible that even though it's in, cause we had told originally that it's gonna have to move to twenty twenty five, so we had to include money for it in twenty twenty five, which is still there. But it's possible that it could be done in, uh, this, this year.
This year.
It would be done, you know, around, in November, um, and so.
That is, that is an excellent time of year to do a lot of outside heavy work.
Yeah, because if it doesn't happen in November, it's gonna have to, it's gonna have to wait till like March or March of.
Right.
Yikes.
Yeah, so, um, but I think that, that, you know, that depending on when it happens, you know, there's, you know, somebody will review the capital expense line and decide what we wanna, what we're gonna do.
I have a question about the, um, we were trying to go building up a capital, um, reserve. I recall we were trying to draw down some reserve because we were over the amount that was allowed a few years ago. Um, and is this different because it's capital reserve, is it a reminder difference?
So we only have one fund right now, it's the general, general operating fund. We don't have a separate capital, capital, um, reserve fund. Uh, even though we budget for capital expenses separately, we don't have a separate fund for that. It comes out of our, um, general operating. And what you, what you might be referring to is, um, what percent?
Fund balance?
What percent, um, uh, um, yeah, the, of, of the fund balance do we have based on our personal budget? The fund balance calculation, well, one, the twenty twenty three audit has not been completed yet, um, financial audit. Not because of, not because of our staff, because, um, we're still waiting on some things from the Village to fin, to finish up. And that would, that, we would love to have that number so I could talk more about, about it, but I don't have a twenty twenty three number. But also, um, we talk about your general fund balance, um, it's a balance sheet calculation that also includes, um, was it, uh, any number of assets beyond cash as well. And so, um, yeah, it, we, then sorry, you look at our, our cash flow, which we started looking at our cash flow, like, we were drawing down way too much cash throughout the year, um, and so.
Wait, would this include like the art?
The art, the art is a separate fund, the art fund is a separate fund, it's reported separately, but yes, it's a balance sheet, it's on the balance sheets.
That's what I was saying, like, so the number we were, I think, dealing with before would have included cash flow and all of the other assets, and that's why.
Your assets minus your liabilities equals your, equals your fund balance.
And that's why it felt so much larger than now focusing on the cash flow.
Yeah, we need to move, and, and right, so it's, it's, yeah, it's complicated. Because if you look at your August financials, um, what we, what wasn't, I wanted to almost say, like, there's a lot of good news in August financials in this, in this pack. If you go back and you look at the August financials, we have, um, let me just quote this. But we have, you know, according at the end of August, we have nine point four million dollars of, of cash. But there's not a lot of cash anticipated coming in for the rest of the year, so we'll, we spent down about a million dollars a month, you know, so. Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll end, right now, we're anticipating ending the year with about five million dollars in cash, which is great as we start the next year, we can earn interest on that money, um, but, uh, what was I gonna say? But we also will need that five million dollars to get us through until we start receiving our first property tax installment in, in March, March of. Anyway, it, you have to look at the balance sheet, you have to look at the cash flow, and you have to look at your budget, and you have to look at your, and at your actual, um, ex, uh, revenue expenditures, it's, it's all of them together to tell the full financial health of the, of the, um, of the library. But to your point that, you know, where are we at as a percent of our, uh, fund balance? At any given year, sorry, any given day, you can run a balance sheet report and figure out where that is. The financial, the financial, um, audit for the end of twenty twenty three, um, will give you the, what, what it was on December thirty first. It doesn't tell you what, what, what it is today or what it is, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, anyway, it's a moving target that we're always trying to, trying to manage. But two years ago, when I saw the fund balance, I'm like, great, we got money we need to spend it, okay, let's do this. And then, um, when you realize what that number actually means, it's your, um, assets minus your liabilities, it's not all just your cash. Cause you also can't sure your cash to be able to carry through, um, you can't, you can't spend your building, you know, and so.
Thank you for asking that Suzanne, because that was, that was something that before, I, it did feel like, oh, I'm, I'm, it's fine.
We were fine, right? We were fine, right?
We, we know this and stuff.
Like, I'm just, I'm, I'm walking around going, we're great, we're great. And you know, we, we are, we are, but it's just, we had, but, but the way our budgets were, were set up and all the deficit spending, we, it wasn't, we had to, we had to turn it around. And, and when I talk about good news in your, in your August reports, I mean, that, like, Linda's looking at this, Linda, our, um, a manager of accounting and finance. And, you know, and she's hopeful that, you know, by the time we receive our first installment, uh, taxes next year, we can start about, start talking about setting up a capital reserve fund for actually having money set aside for our capital expenses, rather than relying on our operating, operating.
And with the, our building, that is gonna make a lot of sense, cause we, it was quite, uh, several years ago, we did get like a capital, I think, the other year, um, saw it, and some of the estimates for, about the HVAC stuff, that would probably.
Six million dollars in about, about ten years, it would, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta start saving for now. And we're gonna update that capital asset study, um, I think as soon as we get, one, one of the first projects with the new ED, um, with Matt Barjew, kind of relooking at that capital asset study, yeah.
Um, is Linda the one that is getting us more interest?
Yes, yeah.
That's what I, I thought.
Yeah, she, yeah.
He's looking and saying, thank you.
Well, well, yes, and also, also though, because we have nine, or, uh, in Illinois funds, we have eight, eight point three million dollars sitting in, uh, Illinois funds, in August, our interest on that was thirty seven thousand dollars. So I mean, if you have money in Illinois funds, it earns interest, and right now it's, it rates over five percent, it'll likely come down, you know, um.
So in the cash flow, we get more cash flow.
Yes, yeah, yeah, you're, yes.
But that's right, cause the effect just blow the way.
Yeah, that is gonna, that's going to impact us, um, you know, but we've, we've built that into twenty twenty five.
Yeah, just looking at where we were in like March versus how much money we have here in Illinois money now.
Yeah, yeah, it's a much better position to be in.
Yeah.
All right, excellent, good, well done, everyone. So, um, then the next item is the board training proposals. Suzie sent an email with three attachments on the nineteenth, while everyone pulls that up, I'm going to excuse myself for a moment.
Yeah, in fact, yeah, other people. Okay. I may already not be on the bell, so I'll, I'll phone you.
Are we, are we all taking it?
I, we're locked in.
I've got a grandma water, cause I, I have to break her water.
Quite honestly, I'm texting the babysitter to see what time she needs to go to school. Maybe the different system for you. It's not how it works.
I know, it's not right.
November's gonna be fine. At least, at least from an operational end.
I'm getting you a block of wood to carry with you so that you can stop chasing us.
Hey, I like, I, I'm just thinking about how we're gonna run things in Cook County, that's all I can control, mail ballot's gonna go out this week by the end of the week, so I'm happy. We're gonna get.
Jimmy Carter's still holding on.
Hundred seventy two thousand ballots will go out this week.
Wow.
And a truck coming up from Zee Lewis.
Nice.
So, yeah.
You can track him down, try to.
Oh my god, you have an idea. Well, actually, we, we've, we're, we've started GPSing a lot of our equipment now, we're gonna, we have geo fences set up where our stuff is, we're gonna know where it goes, the moment it leaves our warehouse and all that, it's really, it's really good stuff, um, yeah, no, we're gonna, Cook, the Cook County clerk's office is gonna be well-staffed in November. Yeah.
What about, uh, post-November lawsuits?
How many of those are you expecting?
We'll ring it.
Well, not me personally, you know, well, me personally, do we, do you?
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I don't think, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I'm still so undecided.
I, we're, I don't think we'll see, you know, I don't think we'll see anything.
You guys couldn't even keep a straight face.
I know, I tried.
Well, yeah, there was the whole thing in the primary around, in the state's term's race in the primary and how close that was, and the, the, the people who were observing all of that process basically came to watch our mail ballot process and left halfway through the day, they're like, oh, we're not even worried about this. Cause our, our process is very clean and.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to imply actual, actual lawsuits, I meant to imply nuisance, nuisance lawsuits.
No, no. Oh, yeah, even, even that, we're not gonna, no, I'm not even worried about that, I mean, I'd, I'd be surprised if we even have anything that's a recount.
Well, of course, I guess we're also Illinois, so like, you know, like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think, I think we're gonna be, I think we're gonna, Cook County and, and Illinois, probably, I mean, it's, no, I, I just remember hearing from last year, I, I went down to a conference down in Vandelia and hearing from some of these downstate county clerks who are Republicans getting harassed and threatened by Republican voters because they think their county clerk office had something to do with Trump losing in twenty twenty, it's like, our county carried by forty points, you know, all two thousand points, but, you know, but. I feel bad, I'm, I was trying to do a good job, so, alright, we are back, thank you everyone.
Yeah.
So, um, Suzie having, I think, you know, said as part of cog, um, yeah, conversation, uh, reached out and, uh, got some proposals for us, um, having, I think, also heard us talk about the, um, sort of orientation and, and, uh, meeting, uh, and, and learning how to be a trustee, so, uh, Suzie, do you, you have anything you wanna?
Yeah, I just was thinking, you know, you guys, we'll get the bylaws, and then on the website, there's goal sheets and kind of some of these things that haven't been touched in a long time. Um, and so trustee training is, you know, I was thinking about it in the context where Lee and I do professional development for our work all the time. You know, I'm going to ILA, it's my second conference this year, and then to PLA, which is public library association, and ILA is an Illinois library association, and I get a lot out of that, it's a great chance to connect with colleagues and kind of remind us what we're doing in this work, and so, just kind of, you know, I know you guys are volunteer, and that's a huge thing, but if there's anything we can do to help, maybe get some of the questions that we ask, that I hear being asked at the table, or what about this, or, you know, how do we, you know, even a simple question of what's a quorum, and how many people, and what's a committee? Um, those are great questions, and I feel like if we had somebody who was, you know, a lot of believe this training, and this is something you guys are interested in, I was understanding that in the fall, you typically do a strategic planning session, um, actually, even the bylaws, it says that you have a retreat every year, uh, in Illinois, and so, you know, could this be something? If you were interested, if not, that's totally fancy, we just did a, did a little, we're pulling together kind of some local options, um.
Um, so I think that, uh, a regular training or a semi regular training of the board is actually really good, like, yeah. I don't know that we should do this now versus when a new board, I mean, I think it should be part of the, the new board, on board waiting process.
On board waiting, like, onboarding, after the election.
Yeah, no, seriously, like, I think that, and I think that it should be, regardless of who's carrying over or whatever, I think it should be at least every two years,
Yeah, no, I agree. Hmm.
And it should be like every time that a new iteration of the board is seated.
I think you're, I was, I was trampling at the pun of onboarding a new board, so, that, that, that was, that was my laugh, for, not a hearsay suggestion, but in my own head, I was kind of amusing.
Right, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So, I mean, we could still select a proposal with the intent that it starts like June twenty twenty five, right?
I mean, that would be in line with our next strategic meeting, which is usually in the summer, so.
Is it obvious to?
Yeah, so it should be like before the strategic meeting, and then, like, so, I mean, there's really no reason why we couldn't select and engage for, and like with the goal date, cause the swearing is April twenty twenty, will be April twenty twenty five, or May twenty twenty five, then do it in June twenty twenty five, and that is kind of, put it out there, have it planned, and get everyone kind of pumped and ready for the strategic meeting, um, and then I noticed Billy had put two thousand dollars for board development in the budget. Um, one of these proposals is three thousand, and the other two are both under two thousand.
Um, so, can I, is there any possib- possibility where we move this to the new year? Talking about the, the board training, un- unless somebody feels like this is something we should move on right now, like, how do you, how long do you think Suzie it would take from, like, like the whole, like, looking at proposals to actually engage in a consultant to do that kind of training?
I mean, so, I hear your point about waiting until you have a new board seated, that's a very valid point, um, and I think that this should be something that's done annually, I do think it's been hard trying to navigate some of the situations that are coming up right now, like, like, we're looking at the bylaws, we're trying to understand how a committee meeting works, we're trying to get you guys through OMA and all of this stuff, when to me, now there is your responsibility to know, you know, forty-eight hours and some of these general rules of board governance, you know, and so I think we have this opportunity now, we're not doing strategic planning, let's just, you know, get some initial.
Well, I would, I see, I.
Get some initial check, so I don't think it has to be that's, I don't think it has to be that.
No, but that's our decision to make, though, a lot, right, vendors.
Yeah, it is your, it is your decision to make.
Yeah.
I don't think it has to be that complicated, I think you can engage one of these vendors and say, you know, I mean, some of them are saying, we could do an hour in each meeting, someone was saying, we could do a three-hour session.
My roommate can't see her.
You know, what is this, what could work for you, what problems is the board trying to resolve in terms of, you know, how do we work, how do we work together, what is, what is our role, what is the bylaws, I mean, these are the questions that are coming up, so.
Hey Suzie, I, I appreciate that, but the question that I asked you was how long you thought it might take to go from hiring and, you know, like sending out, because I, I, I really appreciate seeing multiple proposals, um, I, I don't know, like, if I were to send out a call, I would love to see board training that centers, for instance, DEI work, how do you, you know, like, how do you lead a board? If the, you know, given the composition of the library staff, for instance, you know, like, those are, those are things that I think would be really, truly important.
And that's why I included Sydney Fessnier, who is hardware trained, uh, who worked with Scopy, I thought that would speak to maybe some of the issue, you know, some of the things, I, I don't think it has to be that complicated, I think you could engage a board consultant if you were interested in this, um, training, I just wanted to propose it as something that, you know, as Maya said, you do have the two thousand dollars that is built into the budget for board training, um, we're not running ILA, we're not doing strategic planning this year, you know, is there something you guys wanna do as a board? You know, the money is there, um, do you, do you want a consultant, you know, if you, if you do, I'm happy to provide more information, but I just kind of wanted to propose this as some training, you know, did come up as cog, most of the other tax and values to some consistent training.
I really appreciate, um, this coming up and bringing it, we've been asking for this for at least three years.
Yeah.
So, um, this is really great, I would like to see more proposals than what we have here, um, if we're gonna be choosing one.
Yeah, and if you're asking for, uh, if you're asking for a vote on whether or not we move now, we can, we can have that vote too, I think, but, um, uh, I, I don't see the, I, I guess the board training is, proposals is, is listed as an action and not a, not a discussion, so if we need to vote on this
No, we don't have to, we don't have to, I mean, it's just.
Today.
Action gives you the option.
We have to have it on there, so.
Yeah, 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 if, if we, if we come to, like, if the discussion leads us to a point where we feel comfortable taking it action, we have to list it as action
Got it.
for us to give us that option.
Sure, so I'm saying that, so if we, if we decided that we wanted to vote, we, the board decided that we wanted to vote on this today, I'm, I am happy to, you know, to vote, but m- my personal understanding is the thing that I said at the top of the, uh, top of this conversation, which is that I think it's a really good idea, I think there's a lot going on, and I would like to not do this, um, and then do it again in a few months, my, that's my, that's my understanding. I, I, I register and acknowledge Suzie's disagreement about that, but that's my understanding.
It's, it's not a disagreement, I'm just bringing up a point that understanding certain governance, you know, this could be helpful, this could be an option, an option, you don't should be, you know, December, you know, uh, you know, it's unfair.
It would be, you know, I, and I'm wondering if it's a matter of not, it's, are there specific, you know, maybe there's one or two items that we have specific questions on that we wanna.
Yeah, this was my question, cause one of the options is, uh, three one-hour sessions, so, is there low-hanging fruit that we can put into that first hour that we do now? And to your point.
Yeah, I'm, again, my availability, I, I mean, I'm.
Well, and that was my next question, is who, who of these folks can offer something that's virtual, is that something that we're able to do, because that's also gonna play to. We're already scheduling all the search.
I, I mean, we're literally the ED search thing is meeting at least once every two weeks with more meetings in between, so, I, I, no, I, I'm, and so, and if it, and, and the thing that we decide is that we do this piecemeal, where some of us do it now and some of us do it later,
I'm a ten percent respect to that, yeah.
That's, that's one thing, again, if we need to have a vote, we'll, we should have that, we should have that vote. I am just saying that to me, this sounded like a fantastic idea, something that we have been asking for, um, for, for a while, something that we, I think, uh, I, I can't speak for everybody, but I know that I felt the lack of when I started on the board, and that was four, four years ago, you know, or three, three and a half years ago.
That would work.
So I, I, I see the value of this, I think it's important, I think it needs to be regular, um, but I am doing.
Can we do it later and we get more options?
Yes, but I would like, my question is, can we do this later and, uh, get more options in, in the meanwhile?
Should, I was gonna say, should we focus this month and next month on trying to find additional options, and then that will bring us to November, where we can take a look at the next step of what options do we have?
The budget will, ideally, will be passed, and we will be.
Hopefully, we'll have a job description.
Watched and.
We should have a job description.
Yeah, we should have.
I think, I think that, not that.
No, I just mean, there will be fewer things directly in the.
So, I, I want to say, I want to be completely honest, you'll correct me if I'm wrong, Suzanne will correct me if I'm wrong, but we are slated for bi-weekly meetings, at least bi-weekly meetings
Until.
from now until like March.
Like, I just can't.
Okay.
So, which is not to say that we can't do anything until March, but I'm saying that right now, it feels like, uh, for me personally, again, uh, you know, everybody can speak to their own, can speak to their own schedule, but I feel when it comes to this, I am about as, you know, I'd like, I'd like my energy to go to the ED search and doing that as as possible, cause that's, to me, that's, that's our, that's our responsibility.
A huge, huge job. Uh, then I think it's even more important that we look at what are the options, because some of these folks may not offer an option where we can do some now and some later, in which case does that not meet our board's needs, because for me, time-wise, like, now is okay, January, things start getting crazy again, so like, if we do have these kinds of options, is it something where, you know, you guys are shouldering the, the ED search, like, do I go and shoulder getting the training and, and I sit here and I can remind the board of the, the things that, you know, I get from that training until we're all able to do something next year, so, maybe it is that we look at other options, and then while looking at those options, see, is there the possibility of acing from this training? So that we can. Can you participate in, um, bonding some other options possibly, could you do that for the board?
Cause I need some guidance on that, so, the village, you know, these are the local, so these are the people who do it, um, and locally, um, I do think that, um, I did get some other names, um, you know, you can go national, you know, I, I did reach out to ULC and get some other names, the cost is significantly high.
Sure.
Yeah.
I am also keeping in mind the fiduciary responsibility that I, I hold dearly in my role of, you know, being conscious about the money, and so I wasn't gonna bring you a proposal from maybe somebody flashier that was ten, twenty thousand dollars. I want some more local, you know, people who do this regularly, um, there is parliamentarian that can come in, they're kind of expensive as well, parliamentarian will talk about
Who's on the city?
government governance and how are line meetings and parliamentarian, um, you know, kind of calling order and different roles like that, so, it depends, I think, also what the board wants to focus on, to point where we were, you know, we had about an hour of discussion about like bylaws, and like, what do they mean, and how do we go forward, and so I think I was just trying to give you guys a resource, because these conversations do keep coming up at board meetings about.
Well, that's because we haven't looked at the bylaws in nine years, and that's.
But that's. But I think we're not even sure of like, where do we go from here, and, you know, this, a consultant could help you guys understand, here's a good way to look at bylaws, that's not, you know, something I can guide you, but I think we're kind of all in the same boat of not really sure what, what our pathway forward is, and then consultant could say, here's a good way to look at it, here's what I would include in the bylaws, I wouldn't include committees, you know, I don't have the expertise to offer that, and so, that was something I was thinking that they could help guide, you know, how do we create our goals, or, you know, how do we recruit members, or, um, you know, what kind of onboarding is going to do, you're gonna have, you know, new board members, at least one, you know, um, in May, you know, what does an onboarding look like, you know, but I don't know.
No, can I ask you a question, you were saying that the national would cost more, or you, like, if it's virtual, then why, why would they cost more?
Because they're just, you know, a higher priced one, you know, people are talking, we got a virtual book today from, you guys know who Michael Treats is?
Yeah.
So, you, I said it in a meeting earlier, and I mean, his cost was pretty high for a virtual visit.
Okay.
So, yeah, so virtual does always look cheaper.
Um, would it be possible for us to see the list of other?
Yeah, I mean, have you put together a full list, and then you guys can vet them, I just kind of wanted to do, I know, you know, like you guys have said, you've been asking, and sometimes it's, I recognize you're a volunteer board, and you don't need to go pulling quotes from people, but I have to send you as a list of other vendors, of other, I got some, a lot of quotes from ULC, you know, from national, so.
I think it would also be good for us to look at those numbers and kind of.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah.
Level set ourselves with what really is the difference between the options we have here and potentially our other options, and then we can weigh the difference.
Uh, I also think it's really important for us to understand what we really want of the board training, cause like, I look at the first proposal, and I was like, immediately like, ooh, I actually really like it. I like the fact that we can do three hours, one three-hour, or three one-hour, that's great for schedule and flexibility, I like the fact that they're gonna talk about the important sunshine laws, and these are all things that we really need, but at the same time, I will also say that each one of us on a yearly basis, as being an elected official, should be taking the Illinois Attorney General's free online course for Freedom of Information and Open Meetings Act, so I'm like, is it literally going to be?
Right. Should we be paying for something that we can do for?
Yeah.
But that we, that we're supposed to be doing.
And that we're so, yeah, and that we should be doing on an annual basis, so I'm, I'm a little like torn, cause on one hand, I was like, we literally were just having a really important discussion earlier about how we want to deal with Open Meetings Act, and, you know, both theoretical and practical, and how we keep that moving forward.
Yeah.
we literally were just having a really important discussion earlier about how we want to deal with Open Meetings Act and, you know, both theoretical and practical and how we keep that moving forward. But I don't wanna pay a thousand dollars for something that I'm legally required to do and should be doing free online on the AG's site. So that's.
And to that point, like. On my radar, on my list of things that I need to do.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, that's part of my adding another, but I think you're right. We need to know what it is that we're looking for.
Right.
And be focused on that and what.
Yeah, cause there's the facilitation piece that Kristen, your um that you had sent us on is about facilitating and how we move forward. There's, um I believe it was in the third option, the woman in Wisconsin who's a little bit outside of the range. But I think she was talking about strategic planning and goal setting. I was like that, that could also be a really important thing for us because I think the not having specific goals that we're moving towards as a board may also hold us back. Cause I think we all are aligned in the general concept of what we want to see for this library. But I don't necessarily, but like a focused goal.
Do you, I can't remember Maya, we. But were you here at the strategic planning meeting last, now, obviously, we didn't do one this summer.
I. Yeah, I was here for the, I was here for the.
For the one for the last summer, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So I felt like that that we we had a rich discussion with a number of staff leaders and like literally voted on what we thought.
We. We had, we had a, we had a, we did vote on a general like vision and goal for the library. But there's a difference between, in my mind, right? For the library and then how the board executes on that and what role we as a board want to take. And they're so subtly different that I can see you being like, did you miss that?
No, I, well, uh the things that you're describing seem to be like, so it seems to me that that second thing would really help if all of us were in the same room, at the same, you know what I mean? Like the board
Right.
needs to talk about how you board works together, right? We have some like common uh information and experiences that we base that on. The the other kinds of training that you're talking about, which we should be doing on our own anyway. That doesn't seem to be one that we would, you know, so to, I think to Virginia, to your point about what are our various options? Like it seems that the clarity about like what it is that we actually want, you know, like
I think it was.
will divide.
And there's a library board member goal sheet in our policies on the website that has not been approved since two thousand and four. And there's a list of things here that I hope that you, I don't even know if you guys are aware of, like I will attend at least one program at the library branch each year.
Sure.
I will attend two system sponsored state or national library events each year, you know? Is that something we wanna update, you know?
Yes.
Yeah.
These are, these are all, the, these are all excellent points. I'm sorry, I feel like I've been speaking with Christina, the.
Christina, did you, yeah, do you have something?
Oh, I'm like typing up a comment, cause I don't wanna lose my, I I have a lot of thoughts. I really appreciate you putting this together, Suzie. I, it sounds like we're not ready to to jump on this yet, but I think we need it. Like I, we've all talked about how we need it and I think it's evidenced by like our conversations, right? When we're unsure about certain things. And and so I do think we need it. I think Maya said something around how there are existing trainings, like the OMA one. There's also RAILS and ILA. And I think that that is our job as board members to really make sure that we do know these procedures. Um I think it would be wonderful to to do one of these um once we have a, the new folks on the board and have those bylaws kind of figured out because I think I want less like precision around the statute. I want more focus around what it looks like for us as the Oak Park Library and kind of what Maya was just getting into, like how do we take that policy and run with it or or use it as our strategic plan? And to be completely frank, I was pretty disappointed with the last strategic planning session. So I hope we can re envision that because I, it felt very much just like like one general, what's our strategic priorities? And I think that that needs to be a very facilitated conversation. And I don't know if that should be a board member doing it or an external consultant or a leadership staff or what, but I do think like that needs to be a really thoughtful, thoughtfully approached conversation. I think that's everything I had. Um but yes, I think we should review RAILS and ILA too, cause they've, they've had trainings like on some of these things in the past too.
And I would like to say also, Christina, thank you for the, what what you brought to the strategic planning meeting because it was pretty open and loose and you stepped in and stepped up to the whiteboard and and I think we had a really robust and valuable conversation because of your kind of organizational and leadership skills. So just thank you for that. And that's why a lot of times I keep asking you questions about how we're going to, you know, we we need to know what the what the laws are and what what we need to follow. But then we also have these conversations because we're really thoughtful people, wanting to make sure that we're having a process that works at the best that it can within the system that we have. We don't that's, that's why we have sometimes long conversations that some people may be uncomfortable with because we have um a lot of thoughts about how to to process stuff.
I, is there a, is there um a version, so I, it's, I'm sorry, the, why like, Virginia, you'd asked if we could come back in November with more plans?
I just want us to decide what is it that we want to be trained on?
Yeah.
What is the urgency of those specific things? Because if it's, if it's policy and procedure, like maybe that's a list of links and we all.
And we can all commit, right? Let me answer by December, by January, we're done with these things. Yeah.
Yeah, we all sit down. We're gonna do these. And does that satisfy what we feel we need until we get the new board and we feel like we're, or is it something where, no, we really need somebody to come in and fill it? I I think we don't know what kind of training we need or want yet. We don't know what form that's going to take. We don't know who needs to be in it. So I, I don't I don't wanna get too far into the conversation because I want us to think about what we need and then get that rather than I don't know, I like talk about all of the options, still not having chosen one and then still do the same thing. I I want us to go figure out what kind of training we want and figure out, you know, do we already have free resources to do it? And then go from there. I I I understand that we have money in the budget to do these things, but to Maya's point, I want to spend money on the things that we can't do ourselves.
Well, and so a couple of other options coming to mind, I think that, so uh Royals launched a portal called ILEAD. Suzanne, you might have logged in. Somebody has logged in, cause somebody was asking for, it's a new portal that Royals has launched to help trustee training. And I can send you as a list of some of these trustee things. And I mean, you know, I'm just speaking as someone who's been doing staff training for a very long time, you know, maybe it is in December, we just get together, we'll be all watching. You, you guys will watch it, you see, so you get it done. It's not that thing that kind of gets pushed to the back. And we'll just, we're not paying you, we'll get snacks or whatever.
That's our December meeting.
Yeah.
I like that, yeah.
This summer meeting is just a, is a training. It's all of us, you know, you guys in a room going through some of these modules and and that's, that's what you need, you know? And I can put together a list of something like, what are you, what does ILA have? What is ILA have?
I I would say if, if that, I know the holiday season is rough for other people. If we can't actually get together and sit in a room, then we decide as a board, you know, before the next meeting, each of us will cover A, B, and C. And we make sure that those are done and we kind of put ourselves on our own little course list.
Yeah, and but I, and I think that that sounds good. I think that we should, we could out loud commit to have completing whatever, but I I I'm having and I think this mirrors something that you were saying, Virginia, earlier in the meeting about something else, is that I'm having a hard time envisioning what that looks like without that first piece of trying to figure out what it is.
What the heck it is we wanna do.
Yeah.
I I think looking at, Suzie, that ILEAD is, it's free. We all have access to it.
Yep, it's through. I almost said to you guys, there's a portal that you need to register for, but they, I mean, there's workshops, there's resources. Um so yes, this is, this is something through Royals. They launched it last year.
Is it set out in courses already where we could like give ourselves a, everyone do module one before December?
Uh short takes for trustees is a series of short videos, eight to 10 minutes each, that can be shared during the board meetings, similar to special, I mean, important roles that trustees play. Um so topics explain basics, says what does it mean to be a trustee? Did you share responsibilities, how to set house, you have to evaluate library director, why you should. Um one of the things that has come up to is a board self evaluation. Some of the other governing bodies do this, where they evaluate themselves. Um especially I heard of it, you know, ethical parliamentary standards. So yeah, I can send you guys this. There's tutorials. It looks like there's um there's one, like two hours and you, and maybe that's a thing, maybe pay one or something and watch it.
Well, just, just to be clear, the December board meeting is on Christmas Eve, currently scheduled.
I refuse to change that.
Well.
Then I'm coming in my jammies.
It's seriously scheduled.
Yeah, it's a celebratory for, I just looked.
And that's, that's the third one. So I think that this is excellent. And I, and I think I'm, I'm gonna jump into, what I'll do is, I could also do is um I was trying to create something in um Google Forms to send out to the board and have everybody like fill out what are like the five topics you are most interested? So that if we do have something in December, we can prioritize the things that most of us feel like we want to have there. And it, and not to exclude and everything like that, but if we do have a meeting in December, we can you know, identify good trainings, key trainings on those, on those particular topics that most of the board feels would be, that they feel would be most beneficial.
But what if we, what if we end up with something like women, which we should be doing for free, you know, on our own link?
Well, then we can, we come up with a resource list too of, and like I build on Suzie's.
I started um last year. If I can take time to find where I, I did a bunch of research to try and understand.
Yeah, and by the way, the Attorney General's OMA thing can be finicky depending on which browser you.
Big changes.
It is like, like most, I can't even remember now. Um.
So it's on Apple's homepage?
It really is. It's, it's all text. It's all text.
Really, it's honestly.
Yeah.
And you can't like navigate back. You have to like go through the beginning and like go through it all again if you wanna go back to look at something. There's, it's not.
Yeah, you just need to. Yeah.
Oh, that sounds like fun.
It's unfortunately, it is, it is like the quintessential government website built by the lowest bidder. Um.
I.
There was no outside.
Okay, so.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I'll send you all the link if.
So can I be clear about what, so what are we doing by next month and then two months from now or by November? Okay.
Um by November. By November, we're going to identify our priorities of what we want out of trainings. And then we can assess in November of what, what the next step would be, if it's gonna be a December meeting where we focus on training because at that point we'll have passed the budget. Most of the business of the, of the year will have been included otherwise. So we can use that December meeting as a um as a training, as a, as a, as a board development meeting.
But also by then we'll know, is this something we can do on our own or do we need to get a consultant?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. But I, but regardless of what we decide, can we keep in mind that, or do we agree that this is something that should be part, at least biannually of like of the, for the board in general, so like, so what it looks like?
Yes. But I think whatever list we're putting together, we should curate and we should make sure it's made available. Cause I think that's another piece is we gather resources, that person leaves the board, we gather resources, something else comes out. So like having.
Like a repository.
A repository of, these are the places to go to train. This is the training that your other colleagues have used. This is what we've used in the past. It would also give us a chance. You know, alongside the policies to look at these things and go, okay, we no longer want to do the training that makes us go all the way back to page one and we have to flip through fifty eleven. We found a better option. Let's take this out. It covers the same topic. It gets us to where we can start finding the best resources instead of.
Well, I think we have to do that one.
You, you are.
When he plays on the same page.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's. Well, but again, then we can do that as well. Say, I'm very sorry, you have to go through, yeah, all fifty eleven.
This is the pro forma. Here's the, here's the one that will actually help you on your standard.
And I think, exactly. A piece of this should also be like structuring onboarding.
Yes, I completely agree.
Yeah. And and I think that's what I was trying.
A lack of onboarding is, is, is really hard. Just to tour the building, it's not enough.
I think it gets us. I think it gets us closer if we start pulling this list together now
Mm-hmm.
of resources in conjunction with us all writing down what our specific weak points and concerns are. And then coming back on Christmas Eve in our jammies.
So, so if I understand correctly, uh we're, we're actually talking about, I I wanna be very clear, we're actually talking about two different but related lists. One is what we see as important for us imminently and what we see as what would be our recommendations for ourselves or any other iteration of the board that exists that can be changed, but hopefully will be in place for at least one time, which is with the new, with the new board in May.
Yeah. Yes. Yes, yeah. I'll, I'll create, I'll create, I'll create a.
So that's, that's the.
Think about the second list?
Like a, like what would be part of the larger on, onboarding? Like what kind of training?
Right.
Board, new member orientation.
Yeah, but but I think it should not, I mean, I wanna be again clear that even if there's, you know, we have members, we have trustees who've been on the board for a while, but I think that it should not just be a new orientation. It should be like a.
No, everybody should be oriented together because the conversation around is.
Everybody.
I can, oh, I completely agree. Yeah.
Yeah, and at least, so every, at least every two years, cause right? Like there are special elections or whatever, so that you do that.
We can all commiserate through the fifty eleven pages together and it'll be a bonding experience, I guess.
So that's, okay, so that's two kinds of things that we're thinking about then.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I'll put that, I'll create that um Survey Monkey or Google Form and get that out um to start soliciting feedback on two groups, the immediate needs, weak, you know, weak points that we wanna get short, uh shore up um sooner rather than later. And then a second um item, a list of uh items to prioritize for a biannual sort of uh onboarding, review, um collaboration, refresher. So it's, it's those things that the, that is done every two years when um the boards come on board and have available, show we need to appoint someone.
Yeah.
You know?
Um can I also, can I also ask that you send that also to Lee and Suzie? Because I think that the leadership staff's perspective on what they, you know, like a board might need, I think is important to capture.
Yeah. You got it.
And then this December date, I know we have to put it on the agenda.
We do.
To, 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 to vote, but.
Do you wanna put that on the November agenda then?
We can probably put it on.
So I think October, I'm gonna be bringing I'm gonna be bringing on calendar with you guys as well.
In October.
In October?
Okay, my, it's as good a time as to to address the December.
So we can't vote on it?
Not tonight.
Can, can we even talk about it?
Sure.
Because.
I mean, generally, we don't have one.
Obviously, Chris, yeah, that, that date.
Yeah, we have to, move to the line. No, um absolutely not.
So but we wouldn't be ready, did you say, really talk about it in November or something?
So we're gonna be talking about the actual library dates that are closed in twenty twenty five. We just have to prove.
We're gonna, we're gonna be doing that in October?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because I was gonna say that it seems like if, if we're taking that till November to figure out these two pieces, then then maybe we save the meeting date changed for November. Do, do you know what I mean? So if it's if we realize that we're going to have a meeting, because we've canceled the December meeting in the past, in which case.
Well, I would say, well, I think what Suzanne is asking at this moment is, can we have just a brief discussion as to is what other dates in December might work? For us to have, yeah, if we have.
Okay, because we're talking about doing this get, all get together.
And.
That's what I'm saying, is we don't know what we're asking for until November. I, I don't know what we're asking.
Planning in November for December seems a little late to me.
Yeah, we do.
For schedules, for calendars.
Well, we can, we can, we can always adjust it in November. I would say, I would prefer to change it in October and then have November if we need to make another adjustment. Now typically, one of the reasons why we choose, have we done the, the fourth week of the month is that the financial statements are ready for us to approve and review. If we're not gonna prioritize, if, if that's not gonna be an agenda item for that meeting, we can meet anytime. Like we, if we're not gonna look at, if we're not gonna approve the disbursement journal and all that stuff, we don't need to do.
Which generally, we just do two months in January, so.
Yeah, exactly. So, but I would, what I was gonna say is, we could even do the tenth of December. Yeah, exactly, so, but I would, what I was gonna say is, we could even do the tenth of December, we could go up two weeks ahead of time, we don't have to wait, we don't have to do the seventeenth. And just do one, we, we can do the tenth, you know, and, and those things, so we can have those, so that opens up the, the possible dates for the meeting.
So can, can we put the discussion piece on for next month, or does it have to be an action item?
Can we just keep talking about it for half a year?
It will be an action, if you're making an action.
We're not making a choice.
To be like, yeah.
You can take an action, you don't have to take an action if it's an action item, but you can't take an action on the discussion.
So, we're just floating, I mean.
We're just talking about it.
We're just talking about, cause, cause we're not taking an action, does.
Yeah.
Anyone looking at the agenda wouldn't know that we're talking about it, therefore we can't take the action on it, or.
That's what I'm saying.
Sure.
Yeah, but she just wants us, I think she wants us.
I'm just saying, we're just. Oh, no, no, I'm with you, I'm with you, so we think.
So that's December seventeenth is a good alternate?
I would, I, I, at this point, both the seventeenth and the tenth, I think, work for me, so I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, same.
I mean, neither is as good as the twenty fourth.
I have a sentence for it, all the time.
Okay, so, but we could also do something like, say the twelfth. Or, I don't know what everybody else is regular.
Bless you.
Thank you, um.
Bless you. But, oh my gosh.
So I don't know what anyone else is regular standing, like weeknights are, I don't have much that would, I would have to move around.
Christina?
I don't, I don't think I'm free the December tenth date.
Okay. What about the seventeenth?
Yeah, that's fine.
My, my hesitation with like a Thursday, it's, uh.
So.
It's December and holiday seasons and holiday parties tend to be on Thursdays.
I'm, I'm game, so, two, the seventeenth is a Tuesday.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's why I was like, I like, I like it Tuesdays.
Okay, so.
So let's put on the.
We'll, we'll, we'll have on the, the October meeting, that will be an agenda item to move up the December to seventeenth. I think that's, given the, the nature of where we are in, in the executive director search, I think it would be worthwhile having it either way.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, all right, with that, if there's no other business, we have concluded our agenda and I will declare us adjourned. All right, thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christina.
Bye.
And for those who parked, uh, they pre validated.
Oh, bless you.
Staff had pre validated some. Yeah, so we didn't have to scramble. Yeah.
There you go.